In our work session, this is January 12th and all commissioners are present minus Commissioner Doug Neely. So the purpose of tonight is to, we have a lengthy discussion agenda, but first let's begin with future agenda items. Does anyone have anything to add to the list, knowing that we have a long list as well, and the retreat will be coming where we'll really work through a lot of those issues? I think this evening? Okay, let's move on then to our discussion item. The first one-
May I add something?
Yes, Commissioner West.
Commissioner Nocita and I had been chatting about economic development. We were wondering with our new economic development coordinator if we could have perhaps someone come in and tell us how, at our retreat, if there's time, to see how we work with the county and the state. In four years, I have not met Chad Freeman. I don't know if that's a possibility from the state, but it'd be nice to see, you know, a short presentation or a half an hour on how economic development is done within the county and state and now if it's possible at this shorter notice. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay, let's move then on to our first discussion, and this was a discussion that was forwarded by Commissioner Nocita, where we had an opportunity to talk about the rich archaeological resources that Oregon City has along our riverbanks, and as we develop, we wanted to get an idea of how we wish to deal with those. So does this stand, Tony, are you leading us through this? Tony Conkle?
Yeah, so I'm at Christina.
Okay, great. Hi Christina.
Christina's looking different.
For two this evening, I said.
Three. It's a village. Thank you, Mayor. I'm here this evening with Susan White, Assistant Archaeologist in State Historic Preservation Office. She'll be making a presentation. This is really in response to Mr. Nocita's concerns about archaeological resources, and after a couple conversations with Susan over the phone, and based on her work with other jurisdictions, right now we're proposing potentially adopting an archaeological sensitivity map that would be part of a supplemental requirement during site plan and design reviews and subdivision and partitions. She's here to make the presentation generally about what the State Historic Preservation Office does with archaeology, and we can talk a little bit about that map. So I'm going to turn it over to Susan White, and both of us are available for questions.
You're here.
Thank you very much. Bring this down a bit. What I thought I'd do is, and I guess especially in this type of forum, that I want it to be like a monologue of me just talking about state laws, which I know will be a great aid toward narcolepsy, so I'll go ahead and I'm just gonna, these presentations that I have and some of this regs and such regulations, I'll go quickly through, and when you start seeing some questions, and I do have visuals, because every archaeologist likes to have pictures, to present to you and then to answer your questions. If you also want a thumb while I'm speaking through the folder that I passed, that I put together for y'all, and I will be saying y'all a lot, I'm from Louisiana. Sorry, it is a word, and it can be possessive. Y'all's is folder, haven't it?
Oh, you're not a native, I think.
No, 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 but I do love it here. That you'll have in the folder, there's some articles that I think is very prevalent to what your needs are. It's one that's called Public Archaeology. Actually, it was put together by the Park Service, and it's articles from different participants in this type of endeavor, which would include city managers, planners, engineers. They're all writing about what are some of the, what has worked for them and what has not, as well as archaeologists. So that'll give you a broad view of, this is not something that is new in any respect toward public archaeology and local legislation. Also to give you a perspective is that my background includes being a county archaeologist in the state of Florida, and there were actually county regulations that put into place both our, it was the Department of Historical Resources for the county, as well as a review process. We dealt with both development review and planning reviews, and zonings and stuff like that. So there's a little familiarity more on the local level. So, oops. Just to give you a quick, who are we? We're not a boat. Shippo has created under, usually gets a really good laugh, Shippo. Under federal law, National Historic Preservation Act in 66, and what it does is that every state has a Shippo, and what it does is that we regulate with federal state, or we interact with federal state and local agencies to make sure that there's compliance with federal regulations as well as state laws. So you can say it's kind of like an archaeological police. The major programs that we have, National Register, which y'all are probably very familiar with, with structures, Section 106, that's the federal law, review and compliance, and as an adjunct of that, archaeological services. Archaeological services, we deal with both federal and state laws. And the man with the white beard up there is actually your state archaeologist, Dr. Dennis Griffin. I'm his assistant here. Just to give you an encompassing thumbnail of what we have, we have all the known site forms, all the descriptions of the sites, and as of, you know, last few years or so, we have 30-plus, 30,000-plus sites in Oregon. So this is for the whole state, and we also, all the reports that the archaeologists do, as well as some of the letters that we get from the public reporting some of the archaeological site, we house those also. Now, the one thing to put in perspective is that Oregon has a very strict law that prohibits the public from accessing these reports and site forms. This is understandable. This has been something that was requested and negotiated with the tribes, because having something, reports and site forms for the public to view can lead to looting and damage to sites. So early qualified archaeologists, and kind of those with special permission, that sort of thing, get to see these reports and site forms as well as tribal representatives. That's why we like to have the interaction of putting together type of a model or sensitivity areas for the local government to be able to refer to. Then when it gets into the specifics, the applicant, and also maybe the archaeologist that does the survey for them, that's when they come into our office. So, I keep looking at doing the wrong ones, sorry there. For the cultural laws to be aware of, for this avenue is both state and federal laws, and the federal laws would only apply when you have a nexus of a federal permit, a federal funding, or a federal agency involved, HUD, that sort of thing. I'm going real quick here. Three major, three major laws and one administrative rule apply. You've got the Indian graves and protected objects, so you have where human remains are, objects and sites, law that protects archaeological sites, and well as permits and conditions. That's only saying, let me skip over to there. This is basically saying, if you damage an archaeological site that has human remains, there's going to be a big fine, and everyone's going to be really, really bad at you. For the objects and sites, anything for, and this is for state law, we're one of the few states that have 75 years or older, whereas for federal, it's 50 years or older. So, and that was lobbyist by some bottle advocates, bottle collecting advocates. That changed that back in the 80s or so. This is just saying, and this is more reactive law, that says you cannot intentionally damage a site. If you're gardening, or you're constructing for your house and you find the site, you're not penalized for that. Once you see the site, if you just say, what the heck, and you keep on bulldozing through it, that's when it comes into a violation of the law. And it's for private lands with a known site, so take some consideration that you don't know there's a site there, but also public lands, that you cannot intentionally like a, actually this picture that I have up here is of a Chinese historic site that was found by a looter in Portland. They had demolished a building, and after they took out the foundation, there was a looter that came in and started looking around, and luckily archaeologists were there to shoo them away, but they were on public lands, they were on city Portland lands. So that prohibits that type of thing from happening also. Yes?
Going back to your last slide and the list of fines and laws, et cetera. Having nice laws with Class B misdemeanors is fine. To your knowledge, how often is that actually enforced?
Well, that's an interesting-
Is anybody putting the pokey for?
No, there's been fines, there has been fines. What ends up happening many times is that we try to, we try to address it before it gets to that point of fines and violations and jail time, that sort of thing. What many times happens, there's only, one, two, three, four archaeologists on staff for Shippo, so we can't be all over the state. So many times, we have the tribes call us when they find out that things are happening. Many times it's by accident, it isn't intentional, so we'll have the construction managers or the landowners contact us. Also, sometimes you have neighbors contact us. So I have not, I haven't in my, did I do?
Not sure.
I know, I have a hyper squeal, but usually I'm scared of spiders. For bones, I have not in the six years or so that I've been with Shippo seen that, but we have had it where construction managers, they were told to stop construction, they didn't allow that time, so we had the state police go out and stop the construction. So hopefully I don't get to that point, but there has been, there has been times that I've known of in the last 20 years or so that it's happened. So what ends up happening when you don't have the laws? Chaos. And this is some of the motivations, I thought this was kind of interesting to say why you don't want to have people digging around, because then they try to sell, and you have artifact shows, and then everybody's history goes into someone's pocket. The permits and conditions, excavation permit, it just says that a professional archaeologist, only a professional archaeologist can get a permit to dig for archaeology, which makes sense. But that review process for, and I'll just skip over these administrative rules, for an excavation permit, it takes 30 days of review, because you've got it going through our office, then reviewed by the state museum, the appropriate tribes, the planning agency that would have application for that certain area, as well as if there's a private landowner. So it does go through a long process where everybody's on board on what's going to go on. So that's something that's one of our benefits for the state, not many states have that. If anybody wants to know what an archaeology site, for the state of Oregon, it's 10 or more artifacts. Some states, it's one artifact. So that gives you a little conjunction of kind of like how we see it. Features, that sort of thing, you know, trees with carvings into them, that would be considered a feature, because it's not going anywhere, that sort of thing, or rock art, that sort of thing, those are considered features. It's, many people think when we look for archaeology, it's for the pretty things, but many times it's just for what's the remains of people that have been there before. Shell midden, so trash heaps on the coast, lithic scatters, or remains of stone tools. I thought it was kind of neat, the candelabra tree. They manipulated the tree to grow out in a certain way, so they would put a type of Some other artifacts, of course, the arrowhead, stone tools for grinding. Here's some of the historic, and I think this would be very applicable for Oregon City, which would be refuse scatters, cans, bottles, those are very well dateable, that we can get specific dates. Wagon roads, actually, I saw when I was looking, that there's a couple of Oregon Trail, of course you've got that coming into here. Showing you sometimes it's where you least expect it, this was the vandalized pot hunter site in downtown Portland. No one thought really that anything would be underneath it. But you have bottles, there were soy sauce containers, different things that showed that it was actually where the old Chinatown was before they remade it into what we have today. Ad people, don't do that. Just a reinforcement of the state laws. Federal laws, I'm going to skip over, because that's way too boring. The final thing that to take in consideration is that we can develop an archaeological sensitivity model, and it's basically based on our database that shows all the sites and surveys, we can be able to provide to the city a map that would be only used by the appropriate city personnel, to be able to tell the applicant whether they would need to contact our office. In that respect, we developed this in conjunction to the sites and surveys in the areas, probabilities also, because many of the areas have not been surveyed. And what the one other thing that I wanted to put in conjunction is the consideration and looking into these resources and contacting the tribes. We have the formal archaeology report data. There are some resources, like plants, sacred plants, vision quest sites, that sort of thing, that we do not have knowledge of, nor should we, because that's something that the tribe wants to keep insular to their, to their group. So there are nine federally recognized tribes. Commission on Indian Services, this is what's wonderful, is that we're one of the few states that have an agency, that's a legislative liaison between tribal governments and our agencies. So they will guide you, and they also guide me, I rely upon them quite heavily, on what is the appropriate protocol, who to contact, and if there's any inquiries like from a tribal member, contacting them to see whether that is appropriate to answer that person. Many times you might have, sometimes we have calls from tribal members that are not, as they would say, like card carrying members or official representatives, so we go to the CIS to say, ask what would be the appropriate move at that point. They do have their own website, and they would be able to, if, when the city would just basically write a question, write a letter asking them for this particular area that you're looking at, what would be the appropriate tribes, and that's the federally recognized tribes, the nine tribes. Karen Quigley, who's a wonderful person here, she would be able to guide you through that process, tell you who the contact, who the tribes are, and who the contact people are. She's very wonderful, she's got, she's a lawyer, so she deals with the tribes every day in the politics. So in, what's nice is that after the fact, if you have inquiries from different entities and asking, why did you contact this one compared to another one? Why did you contact this person? You can refer to CIS. If that tribal member or tribal group has any issues or concerns, they go to CIS, because that's what they're there for. Because the politics always change, and I never know about it. And that's our website address. Trying to make it quick. Thank you. Okay, so the second part of this is a little interim to what we're proposing, and I think after I make this presentation, I think it might bring up questions that both what we're proposing and what Susan does. So what we would like to do is adopt this cultural archaeological sensitivity map, and it'll have the known sites, the suspected sites, plus some buffer, and- But they wouldn't be labeled. But they wouldn't be labeled, so you'd see it as kind of amoeba. The big blob, it says, these are the hot spots, not why. Right, you'd see this kind of overlay amoeba on the city, and when an applicant comes in for a development review, as part of, at the pre-application conference level, I would take the map out and say, does your development fall within the amoeba or without outside? If it's outside, then- Hot or not? They move on it, and they're done. If it falls inside the archaeological sensitivity area, what they need to do is they need to contact the State Historic Preservation Office and the representative tribal for Oregon City, as far as I know, that is the Grand Ron or? Actually, I looked at past state excavation permits that are very close to this area, Kanema, and then there's another one that was up by the, I can't, it's moving north of here, and from our past excavation permits, we've had it as Grand Ron, or CIS has informed us that Grand Ron, Solets, and Warm Springs. Okay. So we'll get the official contact, and we'll provide them a sample letter, the applicant, and so in a sense, they put their address and tax lot in to the sample letter, and they send it to the addresses of the tribes that the CIS has told us to send to. And then also, that same letter will be sent to the State Historic Preservation Office, where they can give Susan a call individually. What we're looking from on the staff side, as part of their completeness review, we're looking from the letter from the State Historic Preservation Office recommending what steps they should take. And I'll go back, I'll let Susan embellish on that, but we're not, we're not archaeologists, so we're not here to be reviewing the application based on its archaeological merits. What we're here to do is to make sure, A, that the applicant's been all their contacts, and that they are working with the State Historic Preservation Office. So that letter that I, that I get, or the planner gets, is as a completeness check, it's not a review criteria. We're letting the State Historic Preservation Office do their job, and we're here to make sure that the communication has started at the very beginning of the process. So if you want to elaborate a little bit on what the letter you would send back to the applicant, and maybe the threshold of nothing to everything. Sure. And to put in perspective is that we do these types of inquiries many times, we have like thousands of reviews a year, and we have many inquiries concerning these types of questions on whether there's a hotspot, they should do extra work, that sort of thing. We have three types of form letters that we typically put out, or that we typically send back to private inquiries, and that's what it would be, the private landowner, or whoever, the entity, the client or the applicant, making inquiry to our office. And one would be that, and it's typically the area has not been surveyed, and it would be considered in general a high probability area, which you understand, Oregon City and beyond is pretty high. However, our recommendation would be caution during construction activities. And if anything does come up, here's the state law, you can't plow through it, and you have to contact our office. So that gives them the caveat, or lets them be aware of the state laws, lets them know that they can continue with their construction activities, so that kind of like signs it off in our respect, that would be our recommendation. Another one, if it ends up being hotter, is that we, you get hot, and you get hotter. Hotter would be that we would ask for, and this may be, you know, like the Portland downtown, that would be one of the examples, is that we would request a monitor, an archaeological monitor during initial ground disturbing activities, such when the foundations, let's say it's a downtown area, foundations come up, you start seeing stuff underneath. Many times it is messed up, sometimes it's not. I've been on many monitoring jobs, and you'd be surprised how much is still intact. That that would be our requirement. The archaeologist does know that they'd be turning in a report to our office, it's all part and parcel, they're very familiar, the professional consultants, on how to do the archaeology monitoring report. Now that can be kind of like in the process of when they do their construction activities, so it's not going to hold them up to the point where they get the permit, they've just, they'll just make the promise, there'll be a letter back and forth between the two of us. We say, do a monitor, they say, yes, we'll do a monitor when they do construction activities. The third one would be, the hottest of the hot, would be that we'd ask for an archaeologist to do a survey beforehand. And that what we can do many times as part of the packet for the permit, is again, they reply saying, yes, they're going to have, and they'll have a consultant we would ask for, who's going to do your survey, sort of thing, and have it done beforehand. Many times what we do is that for things to speed up, we'll have just a technical memo between the office and our, the consultant and our office. The archaeologist writes us a quick note, I did a survey, nothing there, you know, it doesn't look, you know, look like it's going to be anything to us. We can sign off on that, gain the report, the formal documentation letter later. What we try to do, especially with these smaller projects, is not hinder the person from the construction schedule, but then again fulfill our obligations on making sure that nothing exciting, or what we'd say, significant archaeological site is damaged. And the turnaround for that, and you were seeing how many per year? You were seeing about 10?
Oh, that probably will fall in this category.
Yeah.
10.
So the turnaround on that, for 10, that's being small parcels and stuff, within a week, we can get a letter back. And what I would suggest for the tribal contact is that they have expressed in the past that emails do great for them. So in the, as much as the applicant can make their packet or their information digital and send it over to them email-wise, many times the tribes will reply via email, that's the quickest for them. We like the paper, because we keep a folder on all of our cases. And that's the nice part is that if anybody loses paperwork later on, we have copies of the letters that we sent.
I know we've had monitors on sites previously, as we've done some excavation work. Okay, questions for commissioners? You have to push your little thing.
Oh, yeah, forgot.
Commissioner Neely.
First of all, I'd like to thank Nancy I for the wake-up call. It was, I think shortly after the 1996 flood, when the Clackamas County owns land along Abernathy Creek, we had the Umatilla tribe come in to speak to us, because there was concerns of possible development occurring along there. They were concerned about the burial site of the five members of the tribe that were executed after the women massacre. Oh, it was Kaius, they're part, I think they're part of, excuse me, they are part of Umatilla.
Confederate tribe.
Confederate tribes. And I presume, you didn't, unless those, I think you mentioned three, we have those particular cases, I would presume that would fall under your purview as well.
Yes, what I'm thinking also is that for that particular area, CIS and our office, especially with our maps, because I don't have my maps with me, I mean, I've been able to, oh yeah, that sort of thing, to be able to include those. So when it is that kind of site that has the special incorporation of additional tribes, that they would be incorporated into it also. But as per say, just in the conglomerate of Oregon City, those three tribes in our past excavation permits, and again, I give that caveat, because that might have shrunken number or expanded a number as per the politics right now, so I don't, I don't, I would, I would not think so. I haven't had it in the last few months change that, but I want, you know, get the official word from Karen Quigley. And I think that's a special circumstance, where you had the Kaius part of the Umatilla, that sort of thing. But I know that for other projects, including the Metro project up at Kanema, up on the hillside, Eric Thor's Garden, who's with the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ron, and myself have been working with Metro on that project. So they're, what I'm thinking is that he's, they're well aware of the area and the development that's occurring, and I don't think they would be untoward or burdensome in any way for them to be able to look at the permits. And actually, I think it's a great opportunity to have that contact with the tribal representatives of cultural resources, subtracting an emergency. So that they're looking at reviews, they might come back and say, no big deal, but in establishing that context, it makes it much more easier when emergencies do occur, and you might have human remains coming up, is that there's already a relationship established, and they have people that they've talked to. And that I've found to go 10 miles more about passions, and many times in those types of instances where you have maybe human remains coming up, passions arise. And if you have an established relationship, and there's trust already built on a regular basis with these types of permits, then a lot of times it eases a lot of passions.
Commissioner West.
How many cities in Oregon have adopted this archaeological map? How many cities use this?
Not many. We have been working with, and actually, you'll see in the folder, a article from Archaeological Conservancy with the city of Seaside, we've been working with them in developing a sensitivity model. And we have also been trying to work with some counties, also with, the city of Portland, I believe, is in metamorphosis of adopting local ordinances into their historic preservation plan, as well as in their development review regulations about this type of review. With the city of Seaside, it's gone back and forth, it hasn't been formalized yet, but there's been a lot of work. And what ended up happening is that the city of Seaside, for many of their areas that are really hot, they send stuff to us. What ends up happening is that the site that you have, the article about, was a site that in the development got notified, and we notified it back, it's a very big archaeological site, and the end of that, the landowners, and this is to show you one of the nice products out of that, was able to basically sell the land that had the archaeological site to the Archaeological Conservancy. And they're an entity that is, it's a national entity, that they are, that's what they do, they collect funds from different people, and they go out and they buy, purchase land or conservation easements to save archaeological sites. And they're rather eager, and has been going many times to our office to ask what areas that they can help with. So that's one of the avenues. If we get to that point where it's very, very sensitive, they don't want to build, you know, the tribes are asking no building, that sort of thing, there are some alternatives. I never consider black or white in any type of review. And what I've found is that if everyone is willing to have an open mind in how to treat the archaeological site, you always come to an end product.
It sounds like there was three different, three types of work that you do, and one was, or that Shippo does, or that's concerned about, so you have the structure, which we're not, that's what we traditionally think of, or I do anyway. And then you have the Indian burial type things, and then you had something what you defined as refuse scatters. So in other words, you're going to have this amoeba, or this map with an amoeba would show things like just even your bottles, and perfume bottles, mirrors, who knows what's ever excavated by an old house? Because any neighborhood, I mean, this is a, we have a lot of 100-year-old houses, or anything over 50, I, no, 75.
Do it.
So-
How could you tell, that, you know, sometimes with a bottle, it's like 25-year difference.
I mean, what, where, what's the line of where it becomes important, or?
Okay, that's a very good question. And that would come into, and that's actually what, one of our, one of my reasons for having a job, as well as the laws in place. The protection of archaeological sites would be those of significance, and that formally is defined as an archaeological site that could be listed on the National Register of Historic Places, remember with structures.
Structure.
Mm-hmm. Same listing. We get to use, it's the same, you know, list for archaeology sites as well as structure. There are criteria that go into play on evaluating whether the site is significant or not. So many times what ends up happening in like a bottle refuse, the lithic refuse should just be the trash and making stone tools, that'd be like a prehistoric. Historic refuse scatters, the bulk and bottles, and the pottery and stuff like that. Many times what ends up happening is that with an initial excavation, or the archaeologist's going in and doing some initial work, they'll gather as much information really that is, can be gleaned from the site. Saving the site for further reason really is not going to protect something sensitive as well as provide any more information. So then at that point, we evaluate it as being not significant, so construction continues. So there's criteria of what we see to be significant- So there's criteria of what we see to be significant or not. And what's really nice is that it's our office that does the evaluation, as per state and federal law, which takes the onerous paw off of the local entity in doing that, as well as stages in that we work with a person that's owning the property and how much they want to save and how much they don't, that sort of thing. Many times, kind of our anthem would be, avoid, minimize, mitigate. Avoid the site if you can. If not, if there's a portion that you can minimize, going scoot, scoot it over to the side so it hits a portion of it, that sort of thing. And in that portion that's damaged, or that would be damaged, mitigation would occur. So it's always a great area in that we always take into account that in a trash heap, some information can be gleaned, but really to save one, what, how is it going to contribute to the local history, regional, or overall?
And then the last question I had is, when you're, on your hot, hotter and hottest applications, on the hot, or hotter and hottest, if a monitor is needed, who pays for that? Or if the next level up of surveys needed, who pays?
That would be the applicant.
Other questions?
And the one thing I would put in conjunction to that, because the initial knee-jerk reaction understandably is like, whoa, more cost. The monitoring, the survey done beforehand, many times in, and I come from when I, in county archaeology, I worked in Florida, which everything's private development. And crazy archaeologists, what are you thinking, blah, blah, blah. What I've found in the past, both in Florida and especially here, is that the economic cost of not taking the precautions of doing a monitoring or survey beforehand is exponentially like 10 to 100 times more. So many times with developers, I provide the analogy of a hazmat. It's easier to go in and have somebody look beforehand, that little bit of cost that's put into evaluating and finding out, make sure that you don't have anything sensitive, is infinitesimal to when you're doing construction, you find something, all construction stops, you have to wait till an archaeologist gets out there, they have to evaluate the site, they have to report to our office. All during this time, ching, 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 time is going along, takes days up to weeks. So that's sometimes where I give the comparison, which I do know it's an onerous upon the applicant.
If you want to comment a little about the ability to enforce your letters.
I spoke to Susan previously about the enforcement, I mean, the letter that Susan created, or, you know, the Ship's Airstreck Preservation Office creates, a developer could choose to ignore it, but it's at kind of their peril.
Yes.
Because now we have a letter that says, that it's in the application, that's in the record, that all the neighbors see, that says, we really suggest you monitor. Well, if I'm a neighbor, I'm calling up on day one if I see that that hasn't been done. So that documentation at the very beginning of the process, I think is the key to this.
And as per the state law, remember in, the one that dealt with archaeological sites, it's the statute 358.905, it says that you can't intentionally damage the site. So they could continue in ignorance whether they have a site or not, but once they, once a site is exposed, and it be, it probably will echo with our recommendations of doing a survey, et cetera. So they have been put on notice with that letter, here's the state statute, here's you cannot continue to damage the site. And at that point, if they find a site and continue with construction, we can call state police, stop construction, and then everybody, yeah.
Staff recommendation here is to develop the archaeological sensitivity map, bring it back to us. I assume there are any other pieces that commissioners want added to that? More questions to be looked at? Commissioner Nocida?
I'd actually requested this.
You're not on here. Actually, Commissioner Smith is.
Okay, so one question is, if it's not a Native American cemetery, but another cemetery, would that show up on inventory too?
Yes, we actually have, we've actually incorporated our, with the Pioneer Cemetery database, into our archaeological database, as well as if it was a family one that's not listed with the Pioneer Cemetery one, that might not, you know, occur. But what we end up doing also is that in checking and seeing that it's a high probability, many times we'll look at some older maps that we have digitized, and sometimes we'll find that there's like a family burial site, that sort of thing. So, yes, it does incorporate historic cemeteries. We don't have the knowledge of like when there's a family.
So if, if citizens, or let's just say local historians, or whoever, knows of a particular place, and they would have a question whether or not it's on your radar?
Yes.
Is that something that can be asked, or?
Yes.
Okay.
We encourage them to contact us. And we actually, there is a coordinator of the Pioneer Cemetery program, that's Carrie Gill. But they can go ahead and contact us and we, we're cubes away. We, you know, yell over the wall going, hey, do you know? No. And actually, there's also the Oregon Burial Guide, which is a fun one to look up.
Commissioner Nocida.
I would hope that as we move forward, and ideally would have been nice if we could have done it tonight. But as we move forward, I do want to emphasize having actual participation by the tribes themselves in the development of our program. I mean, no one, no one knows their culture better than they do. And, you know, if they, if they can be at the table as we develop the language of the ordinance, the processes, give presentations like this, I think that would be ideal. So I'll just.
I know they're very eager to participate in as well as.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate you being here.
Thanks very much.
Our next discussion item is a discussion on water conservation. And I can't remember what prompted this. Is this where we're going to discuss tiered rates?
No.
No, this is not the tiered rate discussion. What prompted this one to be on the agenda?
Commissioner Neely.
Commissioner Neely.
The city commission requests, do we talk about water management and conservation?
This has been in the queue for quite some.
Yeah, and I'd like to mention, if I mind, I hit the thing, but you have to do it when it's on the floor. If you do it on agenda, even if it's an active.
No, I did on the floor. Yeah, I've got mine on the floor.
Yeah, no, no, I was mentioning this, I think I saw James Nocida when I got him to the agenda, his listing was on. But if you put it on the floor, it wasn't. So when we hit this thing, it should be on the floor when you, when you request to speak.
Mine has been on the floor.
Oh, was it?
I have, I have agenda and active items, and my thing is on the floor.
Look into it and see what the problem is.
Anyway, I, when I did request this, actually, it was some months ago, it, I do believe I was talking about the, a tiered assessment during the summer period, but that's, that's all right. I think Nancy Koshar brought up what was going to be going on there at South Fork and so forth, and that's all right. But it was from the standpoint when I brought it up, whether we ought to have distinguished rates for, at a period of time when people are actually irrigating their property.
Yeah, we've been requesting from South Fork a, because West Lynn, city council, has had several presentations on tiered rates, and we're very interested in that, it's on South Fork Water Board. So if this isn't about that, I think that's where we want to go next.
Well, this is a presentation. I do the education and information to make informed decisions and really understand the big picture. So I will, I will go through this quickly because there's just a ton of information about water management and conservation. But I think this, it's good information for the commission as well as the public. So.
Great.
So why, why, we, we're going to talk about water management and conservation. This is mostly an informative presentation. I guess that just, I've never done, used this computer, so it's going to take just a second. Okay. There are tremendous competing priorities for, and interest for water in the state of Oregon, and really actually across the entire world. But in Oregon particularly, we have fish, we have hydropower, which is, we all take such great pride in the hydropower that we provide for electricity in this state because it's cheaper than many, many other states. We have a huge, strong farming contingency, commercial navigation and transportation. We also control water, manage water for flood control. The Corps of Engineers controls the dam levels. We control water for recreation and boating, industrial domestic water supply. The domestic water supply is what you folks are most interested in. And then it plays a very large role in habitat, flood plains and wetlands. The, what we've learned over the last several decades is that salmon, our salmon in the Northwest really truly is an indicator for overall watershed health. What we learned was that declining water quality and habitat led to the declining population in the salmon, and resulting in Endangered Species Act listings. The, what we, the list of uses for water that I gave in the previous slide are what we call beneficial uses in the state of Oregon. And water quality is a fundamental need for all of those beneficial uses. It's such a fundamental need, and salmon became such a huge concern in the state of Oregon, that we came up with our Oregon Plan for Salmon and Watersheds, which resulted in, of course, the Watershed Enhancement Board. So who owns the water? This question comes up quite a bit. And it's the people on the water. I thought this, some of this may be not interesting to you, but really, knowing some of this really is kind of.
The South Fork Water Board is going to be really interested in this.
Yeah. So really, way back to the days of Magna Carta, the concept came around that water, the sea and its shores are common to mankind. And in 1859, in Oregon, Congress, the United States Congress granted the state title to the beds and banks of water bodies in the state. And then in 1909, Oregon actually adopted its own water law stating that all water from all sources belonged to the people. And then there's a lot more history here that talk about who's in charge of the water. I mean, people have been tracking this stuff for a long time. Water has been a very, very valuable resource for a very long time. I think one of our former commissioners used to say something about water. I can't remember what it was, though. Anyway, today, the Water Resources Department permits and controls the water rights. And as the South Fork representatives here know, Oregon City has some of the most senior water rights in the state, and we're very, very fortunate. Those are extremely valuable. But even still, just because we've got these very old senior water rights, doesn't mean that we have necessarily can be guaranteed those forever. We have to make sure we're using them. And today, you have to make sure that you're leaving enough water in the streams for the fish. The other thing that has completely complicated the competing needs for water was the Clean Water Act that was, came out in 1972 by the United States Congress, and then the Endangered Species Act, which I know, I mentioned just previously, that really addresses salmon in Oregon. So there's, given the fact that we have these tremendous competing, all beneficial uses, important, is it agriculture, or is it fish? Can we meet the needs of all of those beneficial uses? There's also climate change. That's something that we've been paying a lot of attention to in Public Works. How can we manage our infrastructure in a way that we're preparing for climate change, changes of water supply? Of course, in the metro area, we also have to be concerned about population growth. And also watershed health. I mean, all of these things are so important. And as we continue to grow, we might think we have an unlimited supply of water in the state, but with all of the competing, the competing needs and growth and climate change, there really, we have to face the music that there is not an unlimited supply of water in the state. So in 2007, the legislature adopted the Water Supply and Conservation Initiative. And that's when the state actually decided they were going to fund some studies and to assess the existing and long-term water supply needs, inventory potential storage sites, analyze conservation opportunities. That's something that the commission, sounds like they're interested in, calculate basin yield estimates, and then grant funding for community and regional water planning. Now, we'll get down to the local level here. Got a couple of documents I'll just flash in front of you so that you know they exist.
Commissioner West has a question?
Oh, yes.
Do you mind being interrupted?
No.
Okay.
Thanks. So on the last slide, you had the, the 2007, the, what was it, the initiative that was passed? So is that what started the interest, or the funding for the studies started the interest in banking water? What did they call it? ASR or ARS?
Well, actually, we've been studying ASRs, which is Aqua for Storage Recovery Systems, for even previous to that. But this is when the legislature really felt like it was important for them to become involved in looking at the state as a whole. So at the local level here, in 2004, we'll talk about South Fork first. South Fork adopted a water management and conservation plan. And this is required, it's a, it's a state law that we have this sort of a plan. And in December 2010, we are expected to have completed a progress report on this. So it's good timing that we're starting to talk about this as a city, because South Fork really is the entity that's charged with managing water conservation for both cities. Not to say that we don't play a role as well, but we document what we do in this conservation plan, and then we also do it in our own master plan. And then in 2014, there's to be a complete update of this document. And the other thing that's important to note is we're not just looking at it from the Clackamas River standpoint, but the entire Oregon, or Portland region has the regional water, it's the Regional Water Providers Consortium, and South Fork is of course a member of that. And we have a regional water supply plan for the entire region as well. And there were updates, well, this is the update in 2004, so I don't know when is going to be the next update. But this, having read it, it seems still fairly contemporary. So since 2001, this, I guess the requirements for us to have one of these required the first one to be done in 2001. And what this says is that South Fork's role in this is that they provide educational programs and technical assistance to both cities, Oregon City and West Lynn. And they have a staff person who is actually now working with the Regional Water Providers so that she can be used more efficiently. And it, one of the things that this states is that South Fork has the right to require conservation and curtailment during emergencies. And it also says that the South Fork is going to be responsible for looking for unaccounted for water so that you can try to avoid water loss as much as possible. You have to be looking for it. And unaccounted for water, as it notes on the screen, is a combination of system leakage, unmetered water, because some, some water gets used and it doesn't go through a meter, so you don't measure it, so it just gets lost. And then there's a number of other undocumented types. For a system in good condition, you would expect about a 10 to 15 percent amount of unaccounted for water.
My time on the city council, that we did replace some meters and replace some leaks and saved a ton of water. And I mean, I was just amazed, what a difference just that simple fix made.
Yes. And we also, we did an audit on all of our meters, that's right. And then the most recently, when we relined the 10 and a half million gallon reservoir, it still leaks, but it doesn't leak nearly as bad as it did before. It's hard to get a 100-year-old concrete tank not to leak. So.
Right. Do you, do we know what the percentage loss is in our system?
Well, I was just looking at those numbers, and right now, we're in the 12 to 14 percent range. Yeah, it's, you know, numbers, they're, you can't, you kind of.
They vary, don't they?
Right.
But I think it was higher before we did.
Yes, I think it was up to 20 percent.
I think it was.
Something ridiculous. David Wimmer would certainly remember the exact number, but I think it was like 18 percent.
I'm remembering 20 percent or something, too.
Yeah. And that was when we realized we really had to take, take on a much more serious program. So the programs for water management and conservation are described for both the cities of West Lynn. of West Lynn and Oregon City in South Fork's book. In the regional program, it essentially provides a lot of information of what the region's going to do as a whole. It talks about education, what areas they're going to focus on, and what are the high-priority individuals to provide more information, such as property manager workshops. Nothing's worse than a condominium building full of leaking or dripping faucets. Those kinds of things can really help in terms of conserving water. And then there's also been a whole series of irrigation and landscape workshops. That's another area where I think we've made a whole lot of progress in terms of some water conservation, and that is people with irrigation systems that have them and timers now. They don't just put their sprinkler system out there and water the sidewalk, that kind of, those improvements, I think, are making a big difference.
At Clackamas Community College, we participated in the demonstration garden, which shows how to plant and how to irrigate, you know.
Conserve more water. Speaking of education, as you probably all know, South Fork and the Regional Water Providers Consortium have a number of brochures, and they're all out in front, that if the public picks them up, they can learn more about how to conserve water, how to plant smarter landscaping. And I think the mayor was advertising this the other night. We have a new calendar out that is another educational tool that South Fork helps put together every year. So I mentioned unaccounted for water, 10% to 15%. And in Oregon City, we have a number of places where this occurs. One is in distribution system leaks. One is in reservoir leaks. You can actually see the Mountain View Tank leaking right there. We have main breaks when you just lose a whole bunch of water really fast before you get to shut the valves down. There are a number of old meters that leak. We have a regular meter replacement program. And then there's times when we use water that's not metered, such as firefighting, hydrant testing, and line flushing. Oregon City started its leak detection program in 2008. Before that time, we were not participating in a leak detection program, and we've been doing it ever since. And we've done, we've made quite a few repairs as a result of it. So in 2008, of course, we did the entire city, because it had never been done before, at least since I was here, since in the 90s. And since then, you don't need to do the entire city all at once, but we do a third of the city each year. And then what we also do is every year, we do all of our water lines in steep slope areas so that we can monitor annually any potential water leaks that could be, that could pop up in an area where we could have slope instability. So here are some of the numbers we were looking for, Mayor Norris. In 2007, we had 18.5% unaccounted for water, and then in 2008, it was 14.7. So there was a tremendous reduction that year. So we have, you know, that's what you have your water utility for, is to have your leak repair program. And we, this is required, by the way, if you have more than 7,500 customers. And the other thing that we have in our water department is annual pipe replacements. Every year in our budget, it's in our capital improvement program. We spend anywhere between $500,000 and $1 million on pipe replacements every year. We feel like that's making a big dent in water conservation in Oregon City. And then, of course, our leak detection program. These are the components of our leak repair program. The other thing we do to conserve water as a utility is we have our meter testing and maintenance. Our large meters get tested every two to three years. We used to test residential meters, but at this point, instead, what we do is we just switch them out. It's actually cheaper to replace a residential meter than to take it out, examine it, put it back in the ground. So they're very economical. And then we also calibrate the master meters regularly now so that we can look for any erroneous patterns, because that's where you can get erroneous leak detector, unaccounted for water readings as well. If you're not metering the water accurately, then you're not getting accurate numbers. So there's some other areas here, pipe replacements, reservoirs, where we have unaccounted water. And we always are working and trying to reduce the unaccounted for water to conserve it as much as possible. The other thing that we, this is actually something that David Wimmer participates in, is the city annual water audit. And that's done in compliance with American Water Works Association guidance. And then if, we have not done a lot of these, but I know they're available particularly through the Regional Water Consortium, is the individual water audit, where you can come into your house and look for areas where you could be conserving water or just saving it. Mentioned public education. We go out to the schools, and on Public Works Week, we provide information on water conservation. Clackamas Community College has a very significant program on this. If you want to go to a website, the www.c conserve H2O.org has all kinds of information. And then there's been a lot of education about landscaping. So moving on to another focus of attention for water conservation and water management is the whole notion of reuse or recycle or reclaim water that's already been used, or could be stormwater, and use it for a non-potable use. So that's what, for example, the Purple Pipe Plumbing, that I'm sure you're all familiar with, also sometimes called rainwater harvesting. These programs have, in the past, been primarily driven by wastewater treatment, because there are huge volumes of water that are a result of treating wastewater. And in a way, to try to use all of those resources more efficiently, a lot of wastewater districts have looked at, how can we reuse the water? And I think we've talked to Tri-City about that as well. You can use it for irrigation. There's obviously logistic issues for using any reused water for potable water because of the water quality standards. I have been talking to John Collins at South Fork, and they're definitely not ready for primetime for doing this sort of reclaiming of water at South Fork, getting anything from Tri-City, et cetera. So then, now, to rate structures. This is what is driving the outcome of this presentation. There is a manual from American Water Works Association that talks about the principles of water rates, fees, and charges, and it has this included in there. It is based on tiered block rates, as you're aware of, so the more water you use, the more you pay. The thing that you have to be aware of is the cost of service is not going to go down necessarily if you reduce consumption. You're just going to have all the same pipes and probably, same kind of pipe replacement program, same kind of capital improvement program, same kind of maintenance. So that's something that is, tends to be, at first, not very popular with the rate payer, because it could be that everybody's rates go up, even if you're not using much water, just depending on which tier you end up being in. So I brought this to you as an introductory presentation to provide a lot of background for you, to not just thinking about it from the drinking water sense, but it's just a huge, broad topic that I think is good for everyone to be more aware of. And bottom line is, protection of the water resources is going to require efficient consumption of Oregon water by us, the people. As I mentioned before, 2010 is the next update of the South Fork Water Board Water Management and Conservation Plan. We do have an active leak detection, repair, meter replacement program, that kind of thing. So probably, if you're going to, say, make a statement for trying to control water consumption by the consumer, the tiered rate structure would be an area you would want to look at. And we do lots of public education programs. Whether we could beef those up, I think our website could use some beefing up for water conservation tips. I took this off of the Charlottesville website. We don't have anything like this on our website. So I think that would be an area where if we just wanted to try to put more emphasis on education, this would be a cost-effective way to do it. And then we could also start looking at more reuse for non-potable uses, and as I mentioned, the alternate rate structures. So with that, that's your background, that's your introduction, that's your information. And you can maybe perhaps provide some direction on where you might want to go with this, or discuss it amongst yourself.
I am very interested in getting more background and information on what a tiered rate system means. I assume that it means that if I use less water, I'm rewarded somehow for that. And so I'm very interested in that, especially since our partner, West Lynn, is actively exploring it. We'd hope maybe to have some joint education so we didn't have to have multiple presentations, but I don't know where they are in their process. But that's an interest of mine, certainly. And I applaud you looking at your website for upgrades, because when we put our rain barrels in, there was no place here in the city that we could go to find information on how we did that, and whether we needed to come and talk to the city about it, or, you know, whatever. But it's, I know that there are many programs that people are accessing in the community on, you know, things like that, disconnecting the downspouts. So I think that's a really great.
Save your water and reuse it for irrigation in your own yard, right?
Yeah, this is what we enjoy doing.
Yeah, so those are kind of, there's a number of different things that we could perhaps promote more. I think we might want to really work hard with South Fork and make it, try to make it as efficient as possible. I mean, customers of the city of Oregon City are customers of South Fork.
I think there's no reason to duplicate the materials, and since there is a coordinator that works on the region, I agree, I think that does consider me to be. Is there interest on the commission to have another session on tiered rates in the future as we say these numbers? Sounds like that might be a good next step. Commissioner Neely.
A few questions. One, in terms of water rights, and you mentioned how important they were. Are all water rights that Oregon City holds under essentially South Fork's control, or do you know that?
Oh, that's a good question. And we used to have our own individual rights, and maybe the American, I think that they, most of them have been transferred to South Fork.
Minorities, well.
I think 100%.
We used to have our individual ones, but we.
They are still in the name of Oregon City, but we've assigned our rights to South Fork.
If you could pursue that a little bit. I understood that we actually had some water rights on the Willamette that weren't assigned. And if that's the case.
I haven't heard that.
I remember this some time ago.
The only thing that I know is that we used to have a water plant during the cholera days, what, 1906 or whenever it was, down on the waterfront, and that John Collins, the CEO of South Fork, told me that if we were to talk about, that that was an early use and still applies. So I don't know water law, but.
Typically, in municipal water rights, you know, water laws as a whole.
Yes.
Typically, municipal rights are somewhat different than normal water rights, but normal water rights can be lost through lack of use. And, you know, if in fact we had a Willamette water right and we haven't used it since 1909, you know, there may be some special provisions for municipal, I know that there's special provisions for municipal water rights, but we'll look into that and see what.
I'd never heard that before this week, so that was very new to me, that that existed.
Right. In some of the information I was looking at, if you had a water right on your property, if you don't use it for five consecutive years, you can lose it. So there is a timing issue involved, at least for non-municipal entities.
Remember, it has an extended period to perfect their water right typically. That's how you get to use it. That's why we still hold some water rights that we've never used, because we haven't perfected it yet. But, you know, we're getting far afield from what I can tell you can.
Well, we're going, we're in court over those issues, many municipalities in the state on that. So there's a great deal of citizen interest in who goes first, fish or people in the rivers.
A few other things. One, you mentioned particular agriculture versus fishing. Of course, we all know that a lot of the development in Clackamas County is going to be on the Clackamas River, using that as a water resource. And as we, and I think there was interest looking at the tiered system, but this has really got to be a region response, because I think we're finding very quickly, the water in the Clackamas is going to be very limiting, either in terms of the fish or in terms of our urban growth. And I think, you know, we need to advance it up into our priorities as we look at this. The other question that I had, the other question that I flagged here was on the reuse piece. I know that in my neighborhood, a few years back, they were running smoke through the sewer system to find out how many, and this would have been Tri-City sewer, I'm sure, but to find out how many people still have their stormwater gutters system out, all this hooked into the sewer system. We saw smoke coming out many, many houses in my neighborhood, but fortunately, my house wasn't one of them.
He's brave to say.
But yeah, I had to say that quickly, although it wasn't anything I did, it was something that previous residents did. In any case, I improved on it, though. But in any case, I don't know whatever happened to that. I mean, I saw no evidence that even residents were contacted regarding this particular issue. And so I guess, yes, Tri-Cities knows where they are, but I don't know if anything actually productive ever happened from it.
I don't remember when that was, because we did some.
Boy, I'm going to say, I'm going to say it's close to 10 years ago.
10 years ago. We also did some about five years ago, and we have all that data, but we focused more of that on the downtown area. And I remember hearing from one of the Tri-City managers at one point that for the residential uses, it was probably going to be much more expensive to separate the storm, the gutter, the stormwater and the gutters from the sanitary sewer. It's probably cheaper just to let it go to the plant and treat it nominally as it needs to be treated, because it's not really wastewater. But I don't know if it was ever, I don't think the city's ever looked at a voluntary downspout disconnect program, where you wouldn't necessarily put it in a pipe for a stormwater system, but you would use it in your yard or let it just flow off naturally. Of course, there's always issues with letting water flow off naturally from your property as well, let alone flooded basements, flooded crawl spaces, erosion impacting your neighbor, you name it.
Fighting apartment complexes.
Yeah, exactly. So there are pros and cons to it, but it's something that, you know, we wouldn't be able to manage that kind of program with our staff, but if it's something the city wanted to invest in, we could, you know, find out what would be involved. The city of Portland has obviously successfully done that, but that has been out in their east Monoma County area, and in the east side of Portland, where you have much more granular soils that can actually accept the surface runoff and take it into the ground, where most of Oregon City, it just, it will not percolate into the ground. But you can reuse it, too. So those are some other ideas.
Just a side note, one of the houses, we had smoke coming out of a lot of vents. One of the houses, the smoke was actually coming out of the roof, which indicated one of their vents must have been actually covered up by the roof sometime or another. Anyway, I assume, and if that was the reason, that's fine, but, you know, as we look ahead and so forth, looking at reuse and what the potential is, maybe even for somebody in my pretty much built-out neighborhood.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you very much, Nancy. Continue the discussion. Do we need a break?
I do.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break, then we'll come back and talk about the business license spending priorities. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to talk about business license spending priorities. We talked about this a couple of times and have not really given staff any direction on what we want to do. So Ms. Patterson, you want to walk us through this?
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, as Mayor indicated, this was discussed some time back, I think it was sometime around the fall, and no decisions were made, so it fell back into the queue, and here we are again. But just as a quick recap, Business License Fund is made up of 25% of the business license. The other 75% goes to the general fund. And roughly on an annual basis, business license to the Business License Fund generates roughly $35,000 per year. We did budget $45,000 this year because we had talked about increasing code enforcement efforts that was tied to the parking program, and we hoped we'd be able to generate another $10,000 there. another $10,000 there. But that program has not moved forward as of yet because of some other considerations had to be taken in. And so I doubt if we'll hit that $45,000 mark, but $35,000 I think will be there. When the budget year began, you did have $215,000 as your beginning fund balance. The only major commitment you have is to the Main Street Board and the amount of $50,000, and this is the second year, I believe it is, of a three-year request. I suspect you'll see that again. Again, any commitments that exceed $35,000 is, that is not sustainable if that's long-term, so something you just want to think, keep in mind as you move through that. The commission has talked about the business license, a lot of things, again, that we funded in the past, there's been Main Street startup costs, there's been some training programs, a lot of those associated with the chamber, there was some money that was dedicated to the locks at one time, of course, to the CHP study, and then there's been some maintenance at the EOTIC. You've also talked about economic development position coming out of this. Right now, we're funding that out of a budgeted position in the budget, and as we move into the next fiscal year, we'll have to take a look at the funding and how we fund these positions. So that's just a quick recap. This is a question for you, really you want to discuss about priorities of spending those dollars, so I'll turn that back to you.
Okay, and then you have a memo that suggests that we have three issues to discuss under this topic, and that is the continuing funding of the trolley, the flower basket program.
That's actually the next issue.
Well, it says on here.
Well, it, it can, yeah, you can combine both of them.
I think we probably should.
Yeah, let me just mention that again. One of the things that the commission has asked us is that those projects that have been funded, city projects that have been funded through either OCCIT grant or Metro Enhancement Grant, is that we look, possibly find other funding sources, because you didn't want to fund programs on an ongoing basis, and those basically are the trolley system, and that has received grant funding last year of $11,500. The flower basket program, there is some money in the parking budget for some of that, but total throughout the city with those various entities, that amounts, I think, to about $35,000 that's going to flower baskets. And then your concerts in the park, which have received somewhere between $10,000 and $12,000 in grant funding, and those are running about $20,000 to $25,000 per year. So again.
Yeah. I guess I would add the 4th of July, too, if that were to be stated.
We've already canceled that one.
Right, we already canceled it.
You asked the city, too, if we're going to seek grants, again, that we find a cosponsor from a private group for those particular programs, probably wouldn't be that difficult to do, but that's kind of an awkward position for the city to be in. But anyhow, my recommendation would be to you is that in those, you look at either continuing to fund those grants until, you know, budget were stronger, or that, I think you're going to have to look to the general fund to supplement those. And again, council has talked about a number of increased priorities, including new police officers, of course, the EOTIC, the Urmertinger, there is park maintenance we still need to get back to. We're talking about the library purchase, which should be built into the budget, the economic development position, there's going to be some costs for the police facility as we move that project forward, Carnegie, the Coe Habitat. So a lot of competing interest for your dollars and question, what do you want to do and where's the funding going to come from and how much goes where, so.
It seems to me that it's difficult to do it the way we're doing it here, thing by thing, that it'd really be nice to see a spreadsheet of all of the unfunded things, and that maybe that's a process either to come through the, our, no, our retreat and out the other end, or, because it's hard to talk about them in total. And I'd also like to test the water here, because I thought that at a previous work session, we talked through the grant programs, the two, the OCCIT and Metro Enhancement, and had determined together that the city would compete, continue to compete with other requests on a competitive basis with those grant funds. Is that, is my memory not correct on this?
I don't know if we came to.
It was probably just a discussion, but I thought that was, was staff direction, no?
The flip side, as you recall, I did give you a spreadsheet, it was an executive session, kind of showed all these things. You don't have enough money to do all these things.
No, 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 I know.
And, and the question's going to become, if you're competing here for these programs, you really going to have to look how important they are, because if you do not fund them through grant funding, I think they go by the wayside.
But I, but I think it would be important, when we have a discussion like this, to have that, that spreadsheet of all of our wants, needs, and places that are not funded in the.
Easy to put together.
Yeah, and, and then to be able to have a holistic discussion, so that we know where the funding sources are, we know what the needs are, and then we're obviously going to have to make tough choices.
I'm glad you used the term holistic discussion, because that's what would be in the budget.
A black hole, I know. I know. Well, I mean, these are times when priorities become extremely important. So Commissioner Neely.
It was a question, but I think it triggers what will happen to our budgeting process, too. We now have a person that is serving as our economic development coordinator, but I don't know if the funding for that position has changed. Is it still covered under the, out of, out of the receipts that are obtained for the, for the, you know, from the building receipts and all that kind of thing, permits, or has it?
Well, you just mentioned that.
Yeah, it's, the position, at least that, well, where we're at today, is it was a position that was originally budgeted in community development. But again, if you recall, the subsidy that you have for community development, it was an easy transition right now, because primarily it's been funded from the general fund. Now, as we move into next year, we'll transition that, bigger part of that position in urban renewal, but if you want it to work outside of urban renewal, then we have to kind of identify where that additional amount of funding will come from.
I know, and of course, it's a retreat discussion, but I just say that there was an interest in my, from my part, was not primarily urban renewal interest. We do, we do have contracted staff that work with us on that. Now, that doesn't mean the need isn't there, too. But I know when we initially talked about having that position before, the decision was to transfer one of our staff members to fill that position, and thinking about it as perhaps part of it funded out of this and so forth, and, and I think, I think the mayor's suggestion in terms of a spreadsheet is, is really important.
We can, we can put that together for you.
Is that your desire that we, again, have this discussion when we have all of the information before us?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Wes.
Well, that's what I was just going to reiterate, is same, I read that the same way as Mayor Norris here. I thought, why, we, it's too hard to analyze this in isolation, so I would love to see this at our retreat and look at it as, from the bigger picture.
Yeah, one of the things we will have, especially the first evening, when it's a joint meeting, we will talk about the budgets, both from a city and urban renewal perspective.
Thank you. So then, are there any additional comments that anyone wishes to make or questions to ask about the, the two grant-funded programs, or, you know, before we roll that over?
Any other information beyond that, that you need for that?
Commissioner, have it there. Commissioner Smith?
In terms of the mayor's comments about the discussion, I remember, my, I remember my comments being essentially that, that I felt that some of these city projects could still come forward for grants, but they would be, you know, thrown in the mix and, and evaluated on whatever same criteria, and that, that my, my hope wasn't that it wasn't always an, an assumption that they would always be funded, kind of grandfathered in, that, that, you know, one given year, there might be other new projects that are more promising or, so I just didn't feel like it should be a given, that this much money is earmarked for these city projects and the rest is given out, that if the city really has programs that feel, deserve money through these grants, that they could come, but they would be, you know, kind of just thrown into the whole scale and it could change.
That's my recollection.
So I think that was kind of the, the topic that we talked about, but.
Yes, that's my recollection as well. Commissioner Neely?
Well, I think one of the things that triggered it was last year. We saw substantial increases in the grants request, and I think the rewarded amount out of projects from the city, and the Councils in the Park was one of them, where the amount requested from the granting entity increased dramatically. And I think that really was what triggered the debate at that point.
Okay, well, we'll hold that over and have that discussion at the retreat. So then let's move on to the code amendment update. Our new community development director, Tony Conkle.
Mayor Commissioners, this is an update on the process of where we're at. As you may recall, back in June of 2009, we updated our code, and we, as part of the approval of that legislative action, we continued it, the hearing for six months out to come back and just review, make sure we got everything that we needed to in those code amendments. Plus, there were a couple other issues raised that weren't included in that June 2009 adoption that we're trying to address as part of this process that we're going through right now. We've been holding public hearings with the Planning Commission. Our next one is scheduled for January 25th. Per the notice, when we continue this, we actually picked the date of January 20th to be in front of the City Commission. We're going to be continuing that to the, to the meeting in February. We're not done at the Planning Commission level at this point. Plus, we are planning on having a joint Planning Commission, City Commission work session on February 9th, next month, as to what the Planning Commission has done to date. Some of the issues that we were tasked to address in this go-around included how to, how to regulate temporary structures, refinement to the natural resource overlay district for density transfers and utilities over creeks and streams and wetlands, low-impact design standards for parking lots and other, and other buildings to be incorporated in the code, and then you had a presentation tonight concerning the archaeological resources throughout our city and how we would incorporate that into our land use process for noticing shippo, to get their comments ahead of time when we do have land use applications in those hot or moderate zones, or however those are going to be defined via that map that is going to be produced. There were several other issues that were raised that are probably larger than what we would put into this cleanup, including, and these are several discussions that we've put, that I've put on for the retreat that we're going to have later this month, including the South End Concept Plan, and any discussion of commercial or small retail in that area, how the commission would like to proceed with that, regulation of trees on, on private property and citywide, and how that relates to not only implementing such a regulation, such as that, and the staff time and FTEs that would be necessary to implement such of a program, but how do we get there, whether that's through, as you may recall, we brought a resolution before you trying to create the Tree Committee through the Planning Commission with additional members, or whether that should go back to a Natural Resource Committee, or a Tree Committee as a subcommittee of the Natural Resource Committee. So that's been forwarded to your retreat as well for further discussion. Another issue is the sign code. We've had our sign code in place for quite a while, and there's, we keep talking about this every year of addressing it, what's the priority to rewrite our sign code. We continue to make amendments to our existing code and never actually just start over and rewrite it, which is probably necessary for that sign code. And then we have Tree City USA designation, which, which rolls into what we were discussing about NRC versus Tree Committee versus Planning Commission and tree regulations and whatnot. Another issue that we haven't discussed yet, but that we will be discussing, and this actually goes into the next agenda item that I have on here, but I'll, I'll talk more broadly in terms of annexations. And what we've, what we've historically done is when we have an annexation come in, our code, we have comprehensive plan designations for every property within the urban growth boundary. When the property's annexed into the city, there are zoning designations identified for each comprehensive plan designation. So for example, low-density residential has a designated zoning of R10, although there are actually three zoning designations that fall under low-density residential. But through our code, we say, if you want to annex and you want to come into R10, we'll automatically do that, that zone change upon voter approval of the annexation. When we did the Beaver Creek Concept Plan and the Park Place Concept Plan, one of the requirements for the transportation component of those documents is that you show compliance with the state transportation planning rule. And in both of the documents, we deferred compliance with what we call the TPR until annexation zone change. So what that means is when someone comes in for an annexation now, we've either got to address the TPR as part of that annexation, which, which would be the zone change, which would be triggering it, going from a county zoning designation to a city zoning designation if the annexation is approved. Or the other option would be, and what several jurisdictions do, is to annex the property in. So you're annexing it in, it will maintain that county zoning designation. If the annexation is approved, the applicant would come back in at a later date and do the zone change. And if the zone change is when you address all of the necessary facilities, public facilities, stormwater, transportation, water and sewer. And then the important part of the transportation is, during that zone change is when ODOT has the, Oregon Department of Transportation has the ability to apply and review against the transportation planning rule. So what you were going to be discussing at the, the retreat is that this is a change in policy on how we, how we handle applications for annexation, and it would probably require amendments to our code to reflect that. So those are kind of the code updates that we're working on and what we, what we see in the future coming down the road, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on that.
Actually, in addition, Tony, Metro has actually, I can't remember if we've actually adopted it, or whether it's just in the works, but concept planning is now going to occur prior to annexation, or prior to inclusion in the urban growth boundary? Has that been adopted yet?
Don't believe it's been adopted.
I think it's just in the mix of.
Yeah, it's making its way up.
Okay, that's, okay. So we don't need to probably talk about that yet, but that's going to also require a change of thinking and a change of process here in the city. The other, any questions on this? Great, we'll look forward to a good discussion later on.
May I make a request?
Commissioner Neely?
I'll give my name up there, as I'm pushing the button.
There it is.
And during this, in terms of the retreat, I am going to make the request, maybe there'd be, maybe it would be there anyway, but if we could have the, the current, currently discussed urban reserve maps available, too.
Current urban and rural reserve maps put forward by the county?
Yes.
I think it's the one we were given at the last meeting. Thank you.
I guess I could, if, since you've brought up urban and rural reserves, and I was going to put this under Managers Meeting, is that the, the next hearing for urban and rural reserves, open house and hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, January 9th, 19th, 4:30 to 6:30 at Clackamas County Development Services Building on Kane Road.
That's the only one, I believe this can be in Clackamas County.
And I don't, if I might, I was trying to get back up here. The one, the one held up there does not indicate there'd be a.
A public hearing?
It's only a public hearing. That is, it's not, it didn't indicate any Metro staff would be there listening in terms of formal presentation. Well, that wasn't on their calendar. It is, it is listed for West, for Wilsonville, on, I think, the 21st. They have two scheduled things, one is the open house, and the other is actually, you've got it there.
Correct, 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 correct.
Yeah, that's true.
And so, in terms of actually making formal public testimony, besides just writing in cards or something, the one in Wilsonville would probably be the, is that the 21st?
Correct, there's Thursday, the 21st down in Wilsonville, 4:30 to 6:30 at Wilsonville City Hall.
I don't know if that's on the Washington County side of Wilsonville or the Clackamas County side of Wilsonville, but in any case, for those people who in fact have something to talk about, that would probably be the better meeting to go to.
Actually, I think all of them are important.
Well, I do, but that's the one that actually schedules hearing time.
The hearing begins at 6 o'clock.
Yes, it will, but I think that it's equally important to get your, online, you can provide feedback, but however you want feedback, please provide it. I think that's the important thing, make sure it's either online or in person or at an open house, because it will all be compiled together. Okay, want to move into the Park Place Annexation? Ready? Ready?
This is just an update and FYI. We have a current application submitted to annex approximately 53 acres up in the Park Place Concept Plan area. It would be just south of Holcomb Road and north, northeast of Livesey. Right now, the hearing is scheduled for January 25th in front of the Planning Commission and then February 3rd in front of the City Commission, trying to get this on to the May 18th ballot of this year for that request. This acreage was part of a previous annexation request that came in in 2007 that was forwarded to the ballot, or to the citizens for a vote by the Commission and was defeated at that time.
Is there any other information that any Commissioner needs on this?
I've got my name up.
Commissioner Neely.
It's not about the annexation per se, but, and I probably knew it at one time. FU10 is sort of what you were talking about just a little bit earlier. There's, it looks like a couple of, and that's kind of a county designation. It looks like there's a couple of designation that I haven't seen before, and I'm just curious what it meant. RRFF5?
Rural Residential Farm and Forestland, five acre minimum. So it's similar to an FU10 holding zone.
Okay.
Five acre minimum instead of 10.
Okay.
It's a rural residential designation.
Rural residential.
It's not a farm. And I believe if you're inside the UGB, it's a 20 acre minimum.
FU means pasture urban, right?
Yeah, it's not.
And I assume that the concept plan under which this falls will be part of the record? The concept, Park Place Concept Plan? Yeah, good. All right, thank you. That was an easy one. Let's move on then to...
So far.
Yeah. Well, right. This discussion this evening was an easy one. Okay, something that I'm really eager that we're going to be talking about is the film policy. We've become quite a place for movies and ads and other media attention. So, Terry going to walk us through that? Great.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Commission. What you have in front of you is really a first draft attempt at putting together some guidelines for production companies coming to Oregon City to do some filming. Historically, there hasn't been a formalized process for companies to come into town, and it has typically gone through a special events permit, which often has run through our code enforcement department and our police department. So what I've attempted to do is put together some guidelines as well as a fee structure for, really a sliding scale for permit fees based on the production size, I guess you could say, based on their budget. And this process was started really some years ago. I believe it started with actually Chief Hurris, who did quite a bit of research on this and looked at various cities and various guidelines and permit applications that were out there. They varied everywhere from Hollywood all the way up through Vancouver, British Columbia, and Spokane. And so, this particular draft really takes more from Spokane, because I think it really fits more of our size of city and what our needs are. And right now, because we do not have an existing film coordinator or a film department, and as you know, we do not have a public information officer, what you've seen in the draft probably, if you've been able to read it all through, is that it currently states that it would reside with our parking department. However, that is up for some discussion. And one possibility would be to reside with the City Manager's Office. My role as the Assistant to the City Manager often does a lot of public affairs indirectly, and so this could be a consideration for that role, because I am able to connect various departments amongst the city and really distribute information out. And so, what these guidelines attempt to do is, as I mentioned, really establish a fee structure based on the size of production, establish a process for production companies to follow in terms of who do they contact, what kind of film permit do they need, how do they submit an application, who in the city should they be talking to. It establishes criteria and a process for the public noticing to the various neighborhoods. We might have some normal filming that would go on, and we might have production companies that might want to do some extended filming that would go on, that would require, I think, more substantial public noticing and involvement. It would also outline the process for the various departments that a production company would need to be in touch with, and I've also provided a checklist down here that would work its way through our system here at the city. So you might be asking the question, well, when would a production company need a permit? Students that are doing some filming for an educational institution would be exempt. Nonprofit tax-exempt organizations that are looking to just do some public service announcements in the city could be exempt. Really, I think a permit would be necessary if a production company was going to come in and do some disruption on our city streets or on our public rightaways. If traffic is going to be interrupted on the street, pedestrian traffic on the sidewalks are going to be interrupted. Tripods and dollys, we all know that production companies use a lot of equipment, and oftentimes they want to close off our streets and get out there and do some running shots. Generators that might be used, and public parking that's going to be impacted. I know that we had a film that was produced here in the last year downtown, and it did some disruption to our parking down there. On page three of the guidelines, I have attempted to provide you a tier one, tier two, tier three scaled system for some fees, some daily fees and some permit fees. I did run this draft by Rob Crocker, who is with Funnel Box Productions, because I know he does a lot of filming, and I just wanted to kind of get his insight from a production company. And he thought it was important that we didn't fee out production companies, so to speak, that our fees weren't so high, that our permits weren't so high, that a small production company wouldn't be able to come here and do any filming. So what I have provided you is, based on a filmed budget, anywhere from a dollar to $100,000 could be considered a tier one, $101,000 to $1 million a tier two, and anything over $1 million is a tier three. Based on that, I would consider tier one budgets to probably have a smaller impact on the city. They might be able to just get away with a rightaway permit, depending on really what their involvement is on our streets and sidewalks. A tier two could be where the daily permit and the permit fees come into play. So for instance, a daily film fee could be $50. The permit fee itself would be 500. Whereas a tier three, which would be a film budget of $1 million plus, would have a daily film fee of $100 and a permit fee of 1,000. These are just suggested, and I'm open to any feedback you may have on the types of fees and the amounts that we would be looking at. Filming hours as well that I've included in these guidelines, and these, again, a lot of this information was pulled from other cities that had guidelines out there, and Spokane in particular, who, I think really who we fell more in line with than Hollywood. So normal film working hours could be 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM in residential hours, with weekend hours at 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And extended hours would be anything beyond that. Typically, in commercial areas in various cities, they do not have restrictions on their filming hours. And the public noticing comes into play when, especially in the residential areas. So let's say a film production comes in and they want to do a filming that falls within the normal scope of working hours, so a 7:00 AM to a 10 or 8:00 AM to a 10. They would need to put out a public notice to all residents within 300 feet of where they are looking to film. And along with that would provide them with a code of conduct, which I've also included in the information here, letting them know, these are the types of filming activities we're looking to do. We might want to block off your street between these times. Code of conduct also makes sure that they are good stewards of our community, that they are not blocking our driveways, that they're picking up their trash, they're following noise rules, things of the sort. Whereas if a company wants to do some extended filming, if they're in a location for more than three days and we think that they might have a more impact on our neighborhood, or they want to do filming beyond the normal 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM or 8:00 to 10:00 PM, then we would ask them to actually survey the neighborhood, to distribute not only the notification and the code of conduct, but to get signatures from those residents so that we, as the city, can look to see what our neighbors think are really going to be the impacts and if we need to abate that somehow. And timeframe wise, I think the timeframe that we would ask from a production company really could vary. Again, if it's a very small company that just wants to come in and do a commercial filming and they think they're only going to be here for one day, or if it's a large company that's going to come in for weeks and really have an impact on our city, I think we would request more advanced time from them. What I've built into this right now is to at least give the city a 10-day notice of intent, whether that be a phone call or a letter, and then the liaison with the city would get the film permit application information to them and really start the process of getting them connected to who they need to work with within the city. Filming really does affect many of our departments across the city. It would be code enforcement with parking, police, Public Works, Fire Department, I know that's not city, but I think it's parks, it really affects multiple areas. And so, this really is a coordination effort to make sure that we've got the right connections for the productions company. And that really concludes my summary. If you have any questions, or I'd welcome any feedback you have.
I think the question that I would have would be, why should the policy reside in the parking department? It seems like in the City Manager's Office, it would be easier to triage the needs of the particular permit. So that would...
I think we would probably make that change. Again, when this policy, we began drafting it, we didn't have Ms. Bankhead's position, and now we have that ability, so, yeah.
I think historically, it had fallen onto code enforcement, because code enforcement does the special events permits and is involved with most of the parking downtown.
Commissioner Neely.
First question, and then a comment. How do we know the production costs?
That is a good question. You know, when someone calls us with an intent, we would request that they provide us with that information upfront. I mean, I don't know how we would demand proof, but...
I have a problem with a no permit fee and a daily film fee at zero. There's a cost to the city, no matter what. I mean, you're going to issue the permit. And I mean, I agree, based on production costs, it should be a reasonable amount, but it's going to take up your time or whomever is designated's time to deal with it. And so, I would rather not see a zero fee.
Commissioner Smith.
Couple things, I guess I'm seeing things mentioned in certain pieces of paper and not in others, so I think we just need to kind of go back through and make sure we're not missing things. But like, the first paragraph talks about, first, well, let's see, page two.
Which document?
Film permit guidelines, it's the first section. It kind of, on the top paragraph, it talks about you'll need film permit for use in city streets, sidewalks, public parking, but it doesn't mention public buildings. But then, when you go down, you will need a permit and then list it, it kind of then spells it out a little bit, but it's kind of, some of those places are inconsistent And then, the other one is on page three, says, "Application for the Film Permit," where it says, "Permit does not include, police is not listed there," and I would assume that would be listed under where it says firefighter and police costs, because then, when you go back to the checklist later on, police is mentioned as something that's not part of the... And I guess I find it weird that the police department is not kind of specified in its own category as every other city department is in this. And I was wondering if that was partly because we would be encouraging them to go through private security rather than getting police, but I know that the police department's been really a big, huge part of it in past filmings, but, so I don't know if we're changing that concept or, because it seems like the Public Works, Parks, Police or Fire Department is all listed in kind of in different categories, but the police department's not really specified at all in terms of security or street closures or anything, which I guess, street closures would do Public Works, but traffic, I mean, I don't know. So it seems to me that there should be a section there that talks more about police, but...
I'd be happy to add that in. I'll work with Chief Conrad on that.
And then, I got kind of a follow-up on this finally, just by looking through this more carefully, but on page four, on the application for a film permit, under insurance and, or under insurance requirements, I thought maybe it should be a little bit more specific. It says, "City of Oregon City should be enlisted and additional insured for a minimum of $1 million with respect to permits issued, or 2 million if explosives and/or special effects are used during the productions." Special effects is pretty broad, especially with the amount of special effects that are used for movies. And so, I thought it was really broad to say just special effects, because that could be anything. But then, when you look on the actual application, it spells out under special effects, including smoke, open flame, gunfire. So I guess we need, so it looks like it was spelled out a little bit more clearly on what types of special effects were a cause of concern, but it's not so much spelled out on this other section.
Okay.
I think that's pretty much it, but, and I will say that for every movie that's filmed in Oregon City, I know I've spent at least two or three hours standing on the sidewalk watching, sometimes up to five hours. And it's so boring, but I can't go home. I have to still watch it. I don't know why. So I'm excited about this, because we've had a lot of movies and TV movies and series and a lot of things being filmed in Oregon City, and I always watch kind of while I'm driving around for bright yellow signs or trucks to find out where they're filming or what they're filming, or, it's kind of fun. And so, I think that Oregon City is a perfect place and has so many great locations that people don't know about in the history and the buildings, that it's nice to see that we're kind of putting together a real plan for this, because my hope, and because it's increased, the amount of filming that's been happening in the Portland area and in Oregon City has increased drastically. And I would hope that we encourage that, because that's about, I mean, the economic development and the business that those things bring into the city is great, so I'm glad to see this.
Commissioner West.
Well, I was wondering who wrote this document. Good job, Terry. I did not know who, I thought, put this together.
I can't take full credit for it.
I know. Elaboration. Well, I appreciate my colleagues' concerns with this and other comments, and I agree with Commissioner Neely that no matter what the costs of the production that they're doing, it does have a cost to the city, and so I would like to see, also see, never zero cost in there, because there is some cost. But, so when we're on the cost topics, I think you're assuming that, or the assumption is with a bigger budget, that there is going to be more work, and I hope that that assumption is correct, because versus work done as performed, because what if you had a small-budget film, but that was tearing up, well, not tearing up, but using a lot of streets, closing a lot of streets, doing a lot of things for half an hour every day, it was, you know, so that was my only thing, is on how to figure out the permit fees is, it looks like you've done some homework and that's how they do it other places, huh? It's not on, versus your, when you go to, you know, to build a house, your fee is on, you know, the work that you want to do, so it's reflective of each step versus the whole total project.
And I think that this is open for discussion in terms of doing a tiered. This really was a suggestion, as I'd mentioned, from Mr. Crocker, who's in the business, and we could certainly look at other types of fee structures if you wanted to have it across the board. look at other types of fee structures if you wanted to have it across the board.
Well, it was just a comment, you know, I don't know what the group does, but, then the other thing, I, on the working hours, the seven to 10, and weekdays and residential, and I think I concur with Commissioner Smith here, we had a movie on our block a few years ago, and it wouldn't, didn't matter if it was seven to 10, because it was all the people looking. But I remember the film company going, bending over backwards with the neighborhood, neighbors, so it was really a positive experience. But, so, my question on this is, there are many areas that are not in commercial districts, many neighborhoods that butt up to commercial districts, for instance, here, close to downtown. Let's say you're in the Hilltop area, there's Clermont that butts up in the back of Danielson's, or the Myers Road neighborhood against Hagan's, or who knows? So my question was on bridging hours with neighborhoods that butt up against commercial, and same with the noise. That was mostly, that's my, mostly my issues.
I think it's important to also remember that when we get a notice from a production company, we will be setting up a meeting with that company, whether it be via telephone or if they come here in person, and talking through these issues. And so I think that we really have the freedom here in the city to discuss those and put some parameters into place if need be in situations like that.
Ms. Bankhead, you also indicated there's a 300-foot notice in there?
Yes. Okay, I missed that then, I didn't put that together.
And I think the other thing that we may be forgetting is, on the tier 1, 2, 3, is that that's just for the permit, because they're still getting charged for use of personal and street barricades and hours.
Okay, okay, so I missed that then, too.
In addition. So I think that might be what we weigh a small budget against, so it's still, city still does receive impact fees, which I think essentially is what this is.
Yeah, okay, I missed that then.
Not that I'm not against adding a little bit, but I wanted to put that in the context. Commissioner Neely.
My intention is not to make anything, things too complicated for the filming industry, but in senior filming hours, the filming hours all straddle peak traffic time. If it proves, if it proves to be onerous to do it, then skip it, but I think we should try to encourage operations where it's possible to be between 9:00 and 4:00 instead. Even though they're paying for the additional barricades and traffic control, the point is that it is affecting the traffic during the peak hours in a lot of the productions that are done, so I don't know if you could have a daily fee that's actually structured, so it's kind of stratified between the period of time that's not peak traffic. It's probably partial where it's located, but actually during those peak hours, traffic's moving all over the place, so, like I said, I don't want to create anything onerous, and if you, when you look at that, you see, you know, this is just going to be too difficult to implement, then don't, but if we can convince people to try to do the work in the time that it's least inconvenient for the people that are going to work and coming back from work.
Okay. And we do, two of the things that I do have built in here as well is to require them to provide a traffic plan, as well as any parking plan with signage and where they would post that, so that would be in the initial conversations that we would have with them.
Which will usually cause traffic to be even more constrained in the areas where the filming's not occurring.
Okay, any others additions?
Build-in cameo roles for each.
And they're done that on the floor of, yeah, I've been in two of the films, so stay standing on the edge, I've been standing for the 10 hours in the middle, and it's all on the cutting room floor.
Since people are editorializing, you know, and I think, I think I know the film that Commissioner West was referring to, which was also in the downtown area, as well as being on Center Street. I'm sorry that the county painted over those bugs on the building. I hate those bugs on the, that were painted on the building. I wish they had left them there.
Actually, I liked the Germans' facade on Weatherford, that was the coolest.
That was a fun one.
I loved that one.
That was great.
Okay, great, thank you very much for your work on that. Let's talk about the Sternwheeler rows, Mr. Patterson.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the commission, at your last meeting, we did chat a little bit about new requests in regards to operating the Sternwheeler rows out of Oregon City. Captain Simonis is interested in continuing that operation and would like to do so out of Oregon City. He did make a couple of requests of the city, as you recall. The first was to be able to moor the rows at the floating dock, and would like to do that at little cost, if any, again, just trying to get the business established, because, you know, these are tough times for lots of folks in the tourism business because of where things are at. And he also made a request that he be able to also moor his private vessel alongside the rows. Again, some of that's for security purposes, and occasionally, he does have an office on that boat, as well stays on that from time to time. As I indicated to you, I think we could probably work out an arrangement to allow the rows to moor on the floating dock, if that was a commission's desire, and I think you could probably build a case of why you would want to do that, and I gave you some suggestions last time we chatted about this. I have more difficult time in trying to figure out how we would do that for the other vessel. I know the security piece, that could be addressed somewhat, it can't be, you know, I don't think there's anything you can do that's fail-safe, but beyond that, I'm not quite sure how we could make that work. Captain is here, and so if you have questions of him, I'm sure he could answer that as well, maybe put some more insights into this issue.
Do you have anything to add at this point, if you'd like to come forward, Captain?
Thank you.
Sure. You need to sit down here, and so the microphone can pick you up, since we are live web streaming as well as cable.
I have a voice like a bullmose anyways, you know.
They'll pick you up.
The second vessel, there is a little confusion. That is a private, is my private boat, but in this particular case, I've bought a place in Gladstone, so it's not my residence, full-time residence, so that, to make that very clear upfront. I wish this were a different situation for me, frankly. Doing it this way is the only way I can see to get the business going again, under the circumstances, as you mentioned, Larry, it's really bad out there. I'm the only sternwheeler left that hasn't gone broke, except for the Portland Spirits Cascade Locks boat. So having the office on my vessel does not, I don't want to do that on a permanent basis. This doesn't have to go on forever. I'm not even asking for that, I think we'd want to review it. I don't know how often you'd want to do it. I mentioned to Scott Archer that possibly we could set it up for three years, I don't care if we review it annually or whatever. One of the things that is an issue, of course, is that part of that, it's a marine board facility, as well as the city, so we have some structure we have to live within. Both sides of the dock are commercial, on that, on the end down there, I don't remember exactly the footage, I was going to measure it today and get it down there. But by putting my vessel on the inside, it does give a modicum of security that we wouldn't have otherwise, plus I would actually put my office aboard that vessel, so it becomes a completely a support vessel, rather than a, you know, a private vessel, if you will.
You're talking about your private boat?
Yes.
Which is how long?
It's 50, 50 feet. So it's, it's, the two boats fit within the commercial section. You folks have worked with me quite a bit in the past, you know that I'm pretty flexible. If we, if we have somebody come up that needs to use that dock, another commercial vessel, I'll be, I'll work with you any way that's possible to do, moving the vessels around, whatever needs to be done. I wish we, I wish I could have come to you a little more prepared, as far as this has kind of come at you in a hurry, but I'd like to get this thing going, I'd like to run it on a little bit of a seasonal basis, probably from April through December, mainly because it gets tough to run a boat up here in January for March, especially a large boat, 80-footer. I would think that we probably would cut it off right after, just before Christmas, and not pick it up again, maybe till May 1st, April, May 1st.
But the boat would remain there, you wouldn't...
Well, yeah, for the time being, Mayor, I would like to see, if we can just get the thing up and going, I would like to see making other arrangements within a reasonable amount of time, if not one season, two, to where it wasn't there in the off-season. It's certainly not going to be particularly, it's handy in one way for me, it's not in another, as far as having it there year-round. The currents get pretty tricky down there and that sort of thing, so, but anyway, that, mainly I wanted to address the second vessel. It sounds like I want to stick a boat down there and get free mortgage for my private yacht, and that's really not the case. The case is that it's a, it's a support for the company, we're going to run it pretty close to the bone for the first season or two, till we can get rolling here, because I've had a sale, as you know, Mayor, I had a sale on it that I waited all year for, and that, I shot myself in the foot doing so. So I'm kind of down to the board here, where I need to get rolling and get it back up and running before I can expand it more.
Commissioner Smith.
I support this. I think that, for several reasons, one, we have a beautiful new park and a beautiful new dock that hasn't been utilized a lot, and to drive by and see that boat sitting out there, I think would take us back to where we were, and actually better than when we had the Bell of the Falls there. I think we were all kind of sad to see that disappear. And so, for the purpose of seeing the dock used and just the interest in having, well, quite frankly, we're starting to, we don't have a shortage of historical sites or places for visitors to go, but they just happen to not be open. So...
For that.
Yeah, there's that small problem. So, you know, this is another opportu, this is an opportunity where we can offer visitors something else to do, that is not going to cost the city. And so, you know, the possible links between the dock and the trolley route, and the hotel, and a lot of other things, I can't imagine anyone thinking that this is not a great idea, or an important project to see, to be successful. And I don't really have any issues with the private boat and the way that you describe it, because I think that, one, for the office and security, et cetera, I think that's important. And quite frankly, the dock's empty most of the time, and so to just see it being used, and I just know people driving by seeing that boat out there, it's going to be extremely visible, and I think, like I said, you know, just, just driving through Oregon City and seeing one of those vessels out there does so much for the history of this town and kind of brings us back, and so I am excited to see it down there, and I'm excited to see it being used in the future for Lock Festival and for all these other different events going on in Oregon City. And even when it's not driving up and down the river, it's, it's an event center sitting there. It's, even sitting there, not being moved, has extreme potential for meetings, for events, and, you know, so I'm glad to see that there was another scenario where we could bring this boat to the city, because I think we all have felt pretty strongly about it, but we have got a lot of things on our plate, and we've got a lot of things that we're going to spend money on that we didn't really know we were going to have to spend money on, and so if this helps at all, you know, it's great to say that we have the potential of having that boat in our city again. So I think it's great.
There's one thing you did bring up that I was going to say after you were finished, is that we, I'm working out a program, and I've been in contact with Patty Galley over in West Lynn, also Gladstone, about using it as a static meeting place, and I'm going to look at fees that are very reasonable to do that, especially in the season when I'm not running. But all year-round, if somebody wants to hold a meeting there, we'll get the fees at a real reasonable spot where we can use it for that. I think there's a lot of interest around, more than I was expecting around the community to use the vessel for that purpose.
Commissioner Neely.
I agree with what Commissioner Smith says. A question, in all means, in fact, my attitude, but would there be a mechanism by which you could moor the, your office boat, I'll call it an office boat, on the sternwheeler itself and you, rather than on the dock, that is on side opposite? I imagine there's issues about currents and so forth, that may, that might preclude that.
Yeah.
I, my impression is the same as Commissioner Smith's, I don't see much use of that facility, and I want this to come back to the commission, and at that time, if our park director could actually give us some indication as to the use of that dock, I don't think it's great, but just so we have a formal statement about it. I have got an answer to the comment, but I'll hold off until we're finished this topic, but it has to do with the dock, after we finish, but I would like to personally have it seen, see it come back to the commission.
Commissioner Nacita.
I would concur with Commissioners Smith and Neely, and thank you, Captain Simonis, for bringing this forward. I guess the only question that I would want to have answered, just because there are office uses and residential uses involved with this proposal, is there would, there be any applicable regulations that we would have to be mindful of in permitting this?
Possibly, and I actually just indicated to the now economic developer that that might be an issue that we ought to look at, so, you know, that's something we would have to work through and make sure the zoning's appropriate, and whether there's anything else that needs to happen, if, for example, meetings start being held there, or events, and so that is something we need to look at.
Hearing your wishes, what we'll do is we'll put together a program, and of course, we'll also look at all these various issues that may come up, and if, you know, if those aren't barriers, and, you know, we'll bring something where you can take action on it. If those are barriers, we'll see if there's ways we might be able to address those, but bring that back to you in that format.
And I would just like to say that, that because it appears we're subsidizing a private business, I would like to also have, when we, when you bring it back, make sure that, you know, that the downtown manager gets a chance to comment on it, and those who have private, other private meeting spaces in the community, because I'm a little bit concerned about that perception of subsidizing a private business in face of the others. So I just want to make sure that we have that adequately aired in the public.
I have another point to make.
Commissioner Nacita.
I want to recollect what Commissioner Smith and some email correspondence mentioned several months ago, when there was a discussion about the sternwheeler that was down in Sacramento, there was a discussion about the best way to visit the falls as opposed to a tram was something very sensory, like getting right up there in a boat, being able to go up to Locks in a sternwheeler and explore the upper reaches of the limit, and then to have this opportunity just kind of come along and realize a lot of that thinking, I think it's pretty neat.
Okay, any other information needed or comments? Okay, thank you very much, we'll look forward to this on a future agenda.
I have Scott in touch with you. I have Scott in touch with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a request for a five-minute break, five minutes, five till eight. Okay, we are back in session, and the next item on our agenda is to talk about changing our, the way that we deal with our city attorney, and that would be for the city. My thing is jumping all over, so, I'm not sure why.
The recommendation is that we now abuse the city attorney.
That's what we did.
That's what we did.
You've used it before?
I think maybe we need to go on to the next item, since the person, Commissioner Nocita's the one that has recommended that. So, let's talk about the merit pay program.
Mayor members of the commission, at your last meeting, Commissioner Nocita had inquired in regards to the holiday bonus pay, and follow that, Mayor sent me an email and asked about that program too with a question mark. And so, I've given you a, quite a lengthy memo talking about what I think the issue is. But let me first state that there is no program of holiday bonus pay, never has been, and at least through the end of March, I'm not proposing any such thing. I think what we're talking about is the merit, merit pay program that we have for management and classified employees. As you recall, seven, several years ago, I think it was in 2003, 2004, our comp class system had kind of fallen in a state of disrepair, needed to be updated. And the commission at that time, too, was interested in a pay-for-performance program. And so, we contracted with Jacobson &amp; Betts. They looked at the program and put together a program that actually featured salary ranges without guaranteed steps in them. And that, and adjustments in regards to salaries along those ranges would be done based on a, on merit and evaluation of performance. Again, there are some salary adjustments take place, particularly as you're trying to folks, move folks to the midpoint, as you want to, that to kind of reflect the learning curve. Beyond that point, you try to maintain that range at the midpoint, and that's where we use merit-based pay, which is a one-time increase based on merit that does not compound the annual salary for the next increase. I think, too, in the memo, you will see that that has had an effect in our ability to be able to hold down costs, particularly in that management and classified area. When we put that program together, it did revolve negotiations with both unions to participate in that. The police department chose not to at that time. They did indicate to us in the, one of our proceedings that we had back in '05, that in hindsight, they wish they had. And this year, I know that one thing that we're dealing with is trying to address some of the compression that has now happened in those ranges that I think this would have taken care of. ASME did go along with portions of the program, but did not accept the ranges without steps in them, so they still have some guaranteed step increases in there. So, again, it's a considerably different program than what we've had in the past. It is along the lines that the commission asked for. It is a merit-based program. Would also indicate, too, when you begin to look at management and classified, now that runs a wide range of positions, from clerical positions all the way up to department heads, as we have in the past, and again, this without any type of negotiation. There's a number of things that have been eliminated from those employees, longevity pay, post-retirement benefits, car allowances, those sorts of things. You also have to keep in mind, too, that that group of employees does not qualify for overtime, and they do attend a lot of meetings. So, I think what we have, I think you do have a system that's in place that is meeting what the commission was looking for. I think also, too, it's a very fair program. I think it's one of those things we'd like to come back and talk to other employees about, because I think it's just a better way to administer a class comp program. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions on it.
Questions about this? I remember when it was instituted, we were really quite pleased to get out of, you know, the system of locked-in increases and that it appeared that, over time, that this was a way to also incentivize and motivate our employees while perhaps saving a little money along the way.
Let me also indicate to you, there, in that memo, you will see the total compensation adjustments over the last three years. And you'll see that is below the 6% that we talked about in the fire annexation program. That does not include, though, new positions. When you begin to add those in, that does change those, each of those classifications, but I think because of kind of the, some of the buffer that we've been able to gain, and this is one of the reasons, we've been able to do that, and from all groups, I think we're still below a total of 6%. So, we're still within what's being done with the fire annexation pledge.
I think I remember our discussions at the time, too, that, you know, where we were kind of in the range of other cities, we wanted to neither lag nor lead the market, and just about being fair to our employees and to the work plan was a really important part of our goal. Questions on this? I know that the new commissioners probably haven't had that kind of presentation yet. Commissioner Neely?
Actually, I appreciate the request from Commissioner Nocita. And I've heard you made references to bonus pay at one time. I presume this is the merit pay that you've been talking about.
Yep.
And so, and there are in fact, upper and, upper limits to what that can be. I know you've been talking about averages and so forth, but...
Basically, the merit program is 0 to 5%.
Right.
That's the range. We budget for that each year, and then depending on the performance base, and you have a list of criteria that we use there, is you'll see those range from 0 to 5. And we have, the question is, have you ever not given someone a merit pay increase? And the answer to that is yes, we have. Normally, that doesn't exist for multiple years, because we address other issues after that.
I think the thing that was also very important to us is that it was, it's very much based on goal, hitting goals. You know, we began to set goals for the city, and our employees are, get their merit based on whether we help, or they help achieve our goals. So, I think that's very important.
Just to comment on that, and I think most of the department heads will tell you they hate it when I break out those evaluation forms to be filled out each year, but the major part of that is outlining the work plan for next year. And what we do is try to look at that as what have we accomplished, what targets have we missed and why, and that's really the bulk of that, because the checkmark boxes, I still kind of remain somewhat uncomfortable with those, because really, with this group of employees, it gets down to what we say we're going to do and have we got that done.
I think goal-setting is so important. Commissioner Nocita?
I have a question regarding the pay schedule form. Because at the bottom, it does list a budgeted amount for merit pay beginning at 96, 650, to 2009, 10 merit pay actual and budgeted, budgeted at 134, 507. Where does, when we go through the budgeting process, I mean, this was completely new to me. It may well be because I'm, you know, was at the time a brand-new commissioner when I came on. But I've looked today, and I have not been able to find line items for these merit pays in the budget. We, I don't think we, Commissioner Smith can correct me, or anybody else can correct me. I don't think we talked about this during the budget process last year.
No, it's been in place. It's been in place for a long time.
So, I'm just wondering, at the beginning of the year, when we do the budget process, where is it in the budget?
Good question. That is budgeted in, the personnel expenditures, and David puts those in throughout the various departments. So, it's not a single line item for that.
If I chatted with Mr. Wimmer, I could get departmental line items for merit pay.
He'd have to go back now at this point and probably calculate it, but again, the amount that was budgeted is for the merit pay. There's also the benefit portion on top of that is the, can't read this one, it's too small, looks like now...
31065, you're looking at the, you're looking at the summary sheet?
I'm looking at this chart here, hold on. 96, 660 was budgeted for merit pay, and then there was an additional amount that that stimulates in terms of the benefits. So, the total, as I recall, I'm not seeing it right here on this sheet.
I don't think you had the benefits in it, did you? 113, 465.
Yep.
And the budget was 134, 507, saving the city's 21,042.
Saving, we just didn't spend all of that budget.
Yeah, not spent.
When did this program commence again? I was late walking in.
My recollection, I have to look back, I think it was 2003, 2004, somewhere in that timeframe. It's shortly after I came, we began to look at that, so probably '04 before we actually approved it. If you'd like, I could go back and find that when it came before the commission.
Commissioner, are you still there? You have more?
If someone else wants to speak, I can...
How'd you complete your...
I would like to complete my thought, because as we move forward into, you know, new city manager regime, I think I'm making notes on how I want us to operate, and I'm learning from my experience. I guess I do have a concern about, again, this not being raised during the budget process. This memo is a really good memo, it's very detailed. It could have been, it could have been given to us before it happened for our input. There are a lot of issues that, things that happen. There've been a number of, for example, department head hires where the commission was completed or presented with a decision on staff hiring without any input or possibility to give an opinion on something. And the, I, over the past year, it really, I think it's been one of my frustrations is, though we are the elected governing body of the city, having stuff presented to us post facto for essentially ratification. I can go to the union negotiations as another example of that. So, I mean, at this point in the current regime, I guess, you know, this, it's, I guess, I guess the value is in the experience. But if, when in, if and when we do hire a new city manager, I do want to have a discussion with the commission and the candidate about proactive consultation rather than post facto consultation, as it were. So, I guess that's, that's my comment on that.
I would, I would suggest that if you want to have that conversation, you do that in the interview process. I think you're going to find that most managers will probably respond, particularly if they are seasoned managers, very similar how I will. I think, you know, again, I think this is a fundamental disconnect and a misunderstanding of the authority, both of the commission and the city manager. You set the budget, and in there, you budget these, these types of issues. It is within that authority that I act, as long as I stay in there. If I'm going outside of that, that's when I need to come back to the commission. I don't know many city managers that's going to be consulting with the commission on the hiring of their department heads. That is the authority city manager, because all these folks work for me, not the city commission. I'm the only employee, other than the judge, that city commission has. If you have an issue with that, you need to work through me with that. And really, the measure there, and I know we went through this with union about folks being unhappy and this, that, and the other, the measure is, is the work that we said we were going to do getting done. If that's the case, even if I have total uprising out there, even though I think that would be a little bit of a different issue, because you wouldn't get the work done, the real measure is, are we accomplishing what the commission asks? If my job is to be popular with folks, is I'm not, I'm doing that at the expense of the commission, because you're asking me sometimes to deliver some pretty heavy messages to groups of employees, to groups of citizens, and if I'm going to go out there and try to make nice so that people would come in, that's my biggest problem with 360 evaluations. If they're coming here and telling you the city manager's a great guy, you're probably thinking, boy, this guy's really sticking it to me every time we turn around. So, I think there's really, if, you know, if you have those type of concerns, I would really encourage you to bring that up in the interview process. I think you're going to have some interesting conversations, and you may have some candidates that'll say, I'm not going to take this job. If that's the case, in fact, this next issue is one of those issues, and one of those candidates, if they're tuned into this, are going to have some question about where is the commission going with these type of discussions and that type of orientation? Because if that's the case, I think what you're really looking for is not a city manager, you're looking for a city administrator, because that's a whole different form of government that you have. So, I think the first thing is, you have to come to an understanding of the council manager form of government and what are the differences in authority here, so. Anyhow, this is something I think you need to bring up in those, those interviews.
The roles and responsibilities are extremely important.
It would be unfair to not bring that up in the interviews and then hire somebody who has one expectation and then change that expectation. I think you're going to have some interesting relationships if you, if you don't bring that forward.
Okay, Commissioner West?
I was well aware of the merit pay for the management and classified, but I, I was really appreciative of Mr. Patterson's memo, because I did not know how it came to be. So, I appreciated the context that this subject was delivered in. And then I just had a little comment to Commissioner Nocita saying, how would any city manager know what you didn't know to bring something up? So, you're, I mean, how would, how does anybody know what you don't know?
I would like to respond to that, if I may. It's not, it's not a question of knowing what I don't know, it's a question of courtesy, of information, information sharing. I think a city manager, regardless if it's a city manager or a city administrator, form of government, anybody with that authority should, as a courtesy, communicate, communicate with the commission.
Communicate what and when?
I'm proposing to hire this department head, what do you think? They, they can, they can, the city manager or the city admissioner is under the charter perfectly free to disregard any one commissioner or even the commissioner majority's advice. But as a courtesy, I think commissioners might have something valuable to say, just maybe. And it is, in fact, the commissioners who are elected and who will receive the wrath of the voters if things don't go well, and I think that is part of the reason that they should at least have a say in some of these discussions, whether it be on merit pay, whether it be on the hiring of a department head. It's just a courtesy.
I think that what you'll discover during your years here is also that if you cannot trust your chief executive officer to do the things that we've set out for that, that office to do, then that sets in place some very interesting dynamics, I think, in the roles and responsibilities. So, it's, I mean, if, if our CEO is not making hires we want, is not achieving the goals, is not doing what we expect, we have an issue then to discuss. And that's why we hire and fire, and the most important thing we do is hire and evaluate our, our city manager, so.
And set goals.
And set goals.
That's why, that's why you missed a couple of annual evaluations, then.
Well, we, yeah, we, we take that very, very seriously, and we have through the years.
Obviously. Commissioner Neely?
Couple of comments, I, I'll come to the comments I was intending to make. Commissioner Nocita said this is a good memo, he wished he had saw it earlier or wasn't requested earlier. I don't, I don't know, I mean, we could have, we could have our city manager sending us memos on every action that's taken. I don't expect that to happen. And in terms of, for example, he's listed here with the, with the individual, with the individual employees, with the, what the amount is. Of course, this is, this is public record, it's all right. My comment is that I would never be in a position to question this. It is a city manager that is evaluating the performance of the employees, and it's a city manager that in fact is making the decision as to the degree of the bonus amount, and I presume this is done with discussions in terms of performance with these different employees as you're making decisions in terms of the bonus, suggesting areas of improvement if that's needed to be the case, or whatever that is. I have no desire to be part of that process. Part of the problem we've got is, we call ourselves a city commission, but by charter, we do not function that way. We function as a city council. I presume we have a new city commission because of maybe something in history. I really think that you have to have a city of large size before you're in a position to actually have a city commission. You're going to have, to have that, those commission positions paid a salary, because when it is a city commission, those individual commissioners do take on administrative responsibilities for depart, for departments usually assigned by the mayor. And they, the mayor and the commission functions in place of what the city manager is, and that's when you talk about hiring a city administrator as opposed to a city manager. Charter-wise, we're not set up to do that, and I do not think we have a personally sufficient pool of people or the, to, to have the number, the elected officials that will come up and through the process, they're willing to do that, or... the process that are willing to do that, or the budget to actually hire people at the commission level to do that. And so, I agree with the city manager that we're, we went into this before on city commissions, but where we have individual city commissioners that are actually getting involved in the process of micromanaging. Now, we have another, we have another item coming up on the city attorney. I have a little bit differing view in terms, not from you, Commissioner Nocita, about a role of a city attorney and whom that should be, who should employ that individual. But in terms of the general staff and so forth, they are under the city manager, and I have no such expectations that we're going to have continuous memos from the city manager telling us what he's doing with, what he or she, in this case, is he, is doing with the staff and why. If you hear of issues, I mean, we have had issues that have hit the commission level where we have had issues with department heads and so forth. These have been dealt with, sometimes painfully so, but they have been dealt with. We have actually gone through provisions where we have removed people from their director's position and brought in new directors of departments. And part of it has come up with concerns from the community, part of it has come up from employee concerns. We've had such a concern actually within the past year or two here, and it is the city manager's going to sit down with those people and discuss what the situation is and how we best need to handle it, and if a person needs to go, then find appropriate mechanism and the most suitable mechanism for doing so. I don't want to be involved in that process, and as a functioning city council, we should not be involved in that process. If we have some concerns, we talk to the city manager about it, but from my standpoint, it's a one-on-one conversation between the individual members of this council and the city manager. It is not something that gets broadcast to the public or to individual employees. If we're not satisfied with what the city manager does, we can let the city manager go, and we've done that in the past, too.
Commissioner Smith.
The memo is dated the seventh. When was it actually emailed? Do I, because I haven't, was it emailed on the?
Monday, I believe it was.
No, the memo was not emailed. The city recorder sent an email with a link to.
In the packet.
On what day?
The day that I delivered it to you, which was what, last Friday night?
No, this wasn't, I think it, I think this went out Monday. I think this one this one out.
I'm not aware of that.
The amended agenda.
Okay.
Well, part of, I think part of this problem that I feel is that, and I haven't actually read the memo yet, because I didn't, I haven't read the whole thing yet, so I won't speak too much specifically to that. But I think one of the things that spiraled this a little bit out of control was the question that Commissioner Nocita asked at the last meeting was, you know, and the wording choice, obviously, was probably different, but he asked specifically about bonuses. However, holiday bonuses are bonuses. The response at that point wasn't, oh, well, you're probably referring to merit pay, or we don't do that, or none of it. It was, we'll get you a report. So, because there was no broader answer than just that, that caused several problems. It caused a majority of us to think, okay, so we do have bonuses, because we're going to get a report on it. And then what happened following that was a mayor, the mayor sends out an email saying, I have no idea we give out bonuses. I don't know anything about this. I can't wait to hear your response. And yet, the response doesn't come quite quickly to that email. And so, it wasn't until actually yesterday that I knew that the memo was there and that it was specifying all this. So, when you talked to the mayor a day or so after the question's asked, and she doesn't know, and that concerned me, but then now to come tonight and say, oh, well, it's just because you two are new, you didn't know all this. Well, she didn't know about it a couple of days ago either, and now we've got this beautiful memo that's all precise, and it just seems, it seems a little odd. And so, I think if we would have gotten a little bit more explanation, it wouldn't have spiraled out of control if we said, hey, this was budgeted, this is, but that's not what we were told. We were told, I'll get you a report, and then that was kind of fueled by the mayor saying, I have no idea what he's talking about. Do we give out bonuses? And so, I think that just really looked bad. And so, there was confusion across this commission about this, not the fact that there's just two new people that don't know what the hell is going on, because the mayor didn't either.
Well, I'd like to speak myself on this.
Me too.
The confusion was generated by Commissioner Nocita, who talked about holiday bonuses, and I had never heard of such a thing. Of course, I know about the merit pay program, and so, I think, I was just asking a question about holiday bonuses, since I had never heard that before, but then when he assumed that what the question really meant was the merit pay program, then, you know, it kind of all fell into place for me. So, it was that language.
Yeah, we didn't get a response saying, clarifying that until.
We did now.
We do now, and, you know, our city manager has quite a few responsibilities, so I know that we expect instant turnaround. Mr. Patterson.
Let me respond to two issues, and then I'll take Commissioner Smith's question first. You know, this came up under, I think it was the manager commission report. It was a question at the end, and it's one of those things, I, first of all, didn't realize that the issue was out of control. I think that may be an overstatement about this particular issue. I could have given a response at that point. I think that would have led to a discussion, and it's one, two, that probably wouldn't have been very thorough and probably would have created more questions than answers. So, and I knew, too, given the, kind of the, how this issue continues to come up and where it usually originates from, I thought probably a more detailed explanation. And so, needless to say, we've taken quite a bit of time to put that report together. If the atmosphere at this bench was different, I would have probably given you about a, maybe a five-minute explanation, and I think most folks would have found what had gone on. But I know, the way things are today, it's usually going to lead to a debate among the commission, probably between myself and several commissioners, and so, we have to go back and dot all the i's and cross the t's. That report that's sitting before you is probably $1,400 in staff time to put that together, because I wanted to go through and make sure that it was very clear on what's being presented. That's one issue.
You've got merit pay, because you're so thorough, so it balanced it out.
I do not, I do not receive merit.
It was a joke.
Yeah, but that can drug me.
I won't even go into that side of the issue, but the other thing I want to raise, because it continues to come up, and, you know, I think we need to put it in perspective, and that's this annual evaluation. If the annual evaluation is so we can come and tell anyone what the problem is with someone, that's not the purpose of an annual evaluation. There shouldn't be no surprises, and I don't think there is any. I don't think there's anyone in this room that couldn't tell you what the evaluation of these five people would be in regards to the city manager. I can almost tell you, because Commissioner Neely's right, if he has an issue, he usually brings that to me right then, and that's when it should come up, and we should deal with that issue. If it's something that lingers through the course of the year, then that's something you can talk about. But really, that annual evaluation is really talking about what we've accomplished and what we haven't done, and if there's things you dislike, you can bring those up, too, but it should be something that we've had those conversations long before getting to that point. I don't try to treat these folks that way, nor should I be being treated that way, and it's really difficult when you've got five people doing it, because it's not going to be, you know, the council's behind you 100% by a vote of three to two, and that's kind of what usually board evaluations end up being. Because really, if the majority of the board is, you're doing a superior job, even though two people think you're doing a poor job, then that evaluation should indicate superior, because that's the majority voice. Usually where a manager ends up in trouble, and I think it's part of the, maybe the division that exists here, is because I'm carrying out the wishes of the majority of this board, and many times, if your councillor's on the minority point, he wants the manager to carry their water for them, and that is not my job. We can have that conversation. It may be something that's easy we can do administratively, it may be something we'll bring forth that we can do, but many times, I'm willing to do that if you can get two other votes to say, we're moving in that direction. I know a lot of criticism I get is around the fact, and especially when it comes to projects we're moving forth on, is because it's coming from the minority view, and I can appreciate where you come from, but that is not the majority direction that I have been given to carry out, nor this staff, and that's what we're going to do until it changes. I work for you as a collective body, not as an individual body.
Commissioner Neely.
I'm just going to state, I think that annual evaluation should be an annual process.
I'm not taking issue.
And that's something that we failed at. There's something else that we failed at. I'll bring up in the retreat in the budget process, but that's our responsibility. If we fail individually to see that something's occurred, either the, either the mayor hasn't put something on the agenda that should be there, then it's our responsibility to let the mayor know. Could somebody please remind me, I think I know, but could somebody please remind me when this request was put forward by Commissioner Nocita?
That question?
Yes.
It was at the last.
Wednesday, at the very end of the meeting.
I think this is a very prompt response. The fact there were emails going back and forth in terms of confusion and so forth, I don't think it's an issue, even if it turned out that the mayor, which he didn't, but if the mayor had, in fact, forgotten there was a merit pay thing and had put that into an email, I don't think that would be a concern. I forget some things more frequently than I'd like to admit, and I'll get something back saying, well, we discussed that for the last commission meeting, and, you know, I don't think that's a basis of discussion. The emails going back and forth for us are our communication base, and if somebody's got something wrong in the email, somebody's got something wrong in the email, I don't think we even have to vet it here in the commission when that happens. But I regard this as a very prompt response to the request that was put forward by Commissioner Nocita. It is thorough. I don't know what Commissioner Nocita wanted to see at some point ahead of time.
Whoa, whoa, I want to clarify right there. I didn't request the memo. All I said was.
Asked for a response.
All I said was, do we give out holiday bonuses? That's all I asked.
And that was the point of confusion, and we don't. The point is, he said he would report back to us. He has done so. It's thorough. It's, I doubt if it's going to trigger any more questions on the issue, because it was so thorough.
Can we go on to the next thing? Okay, we skipped the, if Commissioner Nocita was out of the room, the appointment of the city attorney issue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How many people go around each side? This discussion may just be just as fun as the last one. I, over the course of the past year, in my learning curve on how cities operate and how commissions operate, et cetera, and my conversations with other elected officials across the region got me thinking about our relationship to our city attorney and where the appointment power for the city attorney of Oregon City should lie. And I indicated earlier that I would draft a little, some draft language with some of, it's certainly a non-exclusive list, and it's just kind of like a discussion starter more than anything else, because I think this might take a long time to evaluate and consider on the commission's part. And I have some attachments here with this document, too, and I'm just going to go ahead and read the language as, to give people a flavor of what I'm proposing for the city of Oregon City. It reads here, whereas the city commission is the duly elected.
Do you need to read the whole thing, do you think? Rather just talk about the, what it does?
You're going to read just the whereas's.
In the interest of time, I think a summary would be, maybe better.
How does the board feel?
A summary.
Okay. Sure. Summary, a couple of points. I have a chart here that I spent some time over the Christmas vacation showing the various jurisdictions in metropolitan Portland and the urban growth boundary, and as you can see, far and away, almost every jurisdiction in the metropolitan region, in their charter and code, the hiring authority to hire the city attorney lies with the city council. Only Oregon City and Tualatin have setups where the city manager hires the city attorney. I have experienced, and, I mean, I think this is a good segue from some of the comments of Mr. Patterson earlier tonight, I have actually experienced, as a sitting city commissioner, and I guess we as a board have experienced, at least in my tenure, where information that the city attorney has meant for the city commission did not reach us. I can't read Mr. Patterson's mind, and I will certainly accept his representation that it was inadvertent instead of an intentional move on his part to deny information that the city manager, Mr. Sullivan, intended for this board, but we, in fact, in that interval instance, which I memorialized about, it did not, in fact, reach us. And I think, as far as a client relationship goes, I think, as I say in this one, whereas the city commission has an interest in and rights to direct communication with and unfettered and uninfluenced advice from the city attorney. And I've also included here a paper written by Sylvia Stevens of the General Counsel's Office of the Oregon State Bar, who has indicated that as a general rule, a city attorney represents the city acting through its council or other governing board or individual. In that case, that would be us. So, I mean, to begin a discussion, I think, and I think the other, even though I didn't include it as a whereas, it's just more of a hypothetical, because it hasn't occurred on my tenure, obviously, but Mr. Commissioner Neely just made reference to it. I did, was in a gathering of elected officials where one of the councillors from Canby, because I've been raising this issue with other city officials, just to get their sense of what they do in their towns, and we've just experienced the firing of the city managers of Canby and Milwaukee, and the gentleman I spoke with from Canby was quite relieved that in a conflict situation like that, between a commission and a manager, and as a hypothetical manager, it is possible. He was quite appreciative of the fact that he didn't have that potential conflict and the fact that it's a matter of code, the city manager could hire and fire the city attorney, and, you know, at least the potential influence in that such a situation could kind of make matters more complex than they need to be. So, I wanted to get a discussion going on that, on just where we should go with that. I'm of the opinion that the city attorney should report to the city commission. Clackamas County has just made that same change within a year. I'm doing some more research on that to find out why. They didn't have anything on the website when I went to the agenda for that process. And I think this is a good time to do it, just so that once the new city manager is in place, he kind of knows the direction at the city commission. in place, he kind of knows the direction that the city commission wants to go in that regard. Mr. Kabizman sent us an email, expressed the opinion that it might require a charter amendment. I don't know if I'm of the same mind, having read the charter, but again, you get as many opinions in as a room as you get with attorneys. But I would certainly be interested if the commission is interested in that, in a memo on that, if there's sufficient interest on the board here to take that, go in that direction.
I'm interested in looking at it, as I have been since day one, but I'm looking at it. I have always wanted to have an in-house attorney, I think, for a city of a big enough size. We never have had space before. We haven't had that, really had that option, and now we do. But I also think that having this discussion with a new city manager would be kind of the appropriate timing. But I think to put the issues all on the table today is really an excellent way to do it.
Mr. Kabizman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, you know, I was going to start with saying we don't really have a dog in this fight, but clearly we do. But that doesn't change the fact that we're going to give you unfettered, uninfluenced opinion. I do think if we ever don't do that, you should fire us. But I guess...
But we don't have that power.
You're absolutely right. And if the city, if we do mislead you in some way, if we do give you inappropriate advice and the city manager doesn't fire us, you really need to think about your relationship with the city manager as well.
Really do have influence.
Exactly. And it ties back into the discussion that you had, and I was going to go into some of those issues that you discussed with the last, but you, the last item on the agenda. And you really did hit most of the topics I was going to talk about, you know. I do want to point out with the ethics opinion, you know, the general rule that, you know, I'm familiar with this, the city attorney represents the city acting through its council or other governing board or individual. You know, we, the way the city is structured with the manager council role, you do set the policy directive for the city, but the city manager is the administrative head, the CEO, and he's the one who implements that policy.
Bill, on that score, if I may interrupt you. You've seen the chart I gave out. What do you think, your point, how do you, how do you, what, how does the fact that the great majority of these communities, which are in fact city manager forms of government, are, well, most are, also have the city council or commission appoint the city attorney?
If they're a good attorney, it doesn't matter one wit who appoints them, you know, and we would give the same advice. We've been involved in situations where there have been issues with city managers, where there have been issues with commission members, where, you know, we realize that our obligation is to the city. And ultimately, the direction of the city is invested with its elected officials, and that's who we as city attorneys answer to. In some cases, we answer to the city, to the city commission through the city manager, who does in fact direct us to some extent on the work that we do and don't do. But the city commission is also ultimately sets, is the one that we're ultimately responsible to, I think. I don't think who appoints us necessarily sets who we respond to. I do think that there are some issues in that. But ultimately, you know, our job is to provide advice to the city. And we see one client, and that's the city, and we act in the best interests of the city. I don't want to rehash what we talked about with the last agenda item. I'm happy to talk about all of them, everything that was discussed. But I do want to hit on the email I sent out. And, you know, I talked about this with some other city attorneys with some of the language in the charter. And the general impression I got was that people thought that, yeah, this is a city charter required thing. We do have a code provision, Section 2.08, that says city manager appoints the city attorney. And typically, the commission can in fact change that by adopting new ordinance. But if you look at what Section 11 and Section 21(c)(3) say, I think it's relatively clear that the city attorney is an appointed position, that the city manager has authority to appoint appointed positions except as this charter provides otherwise. And the charter provides otherwise only for the city manager and the municipal judge. Now, as Commissioner Nocita said, you know, there's as many opinions on things as there are attorneys in the room. We're more than happy to do some further research into it and look into it some. Or, you know, if you want, we can get another attorney to look at it. But, you know, I do think that a charter change is something that you need to look at. But I also think it's important discussion to have before you talk to the city managers as well, you know. If in fact you want to move to an in-house attorney, that's something that you probably need to talk about with the city manager, any city manager candidate. If you want to change the appointment, you know, that's certainly something to talk about as well, so.
I think the charter issue is a very crucial one, whether it requires a vote of the people or not. Commissioner Neely.
First of all, I think we should look at this particular issue. Philosophically, I don't have a difficulty with the city attorney being an employee of the city commission. I think we'll have to set up, I hate to use the term, because statisticians mean it differently, but I think we'll have to set up parameters as to how the operation occurs. I think one of the things that has triggered concerns on the part of the city manager is personal requests coming from the commission to the attorneys, to the attorney. We have more than one, depending on who's sitting, but that has required a fair amount of time and therefore budget resources, and it's not under the, it's a budgeted item that's not under, that's running out of control, and it's, I presume, the city manager's portion of the budget. Whereas this would be budgeted under the city commission. But I think any specific requests that are going to require any period of time are requests that have to come from the majority of the commission as opposed to an individual commission. As I brought up before, there's another position that I think ought to be under the city commission, and that is liaison with the citizens. I think that person should serve as an ombudsman, or if I have to do it, what do you correct me? Ombudsman? 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 And that kind of frees up a dialogue that the citizens may have. And so there's a couple of things that I think ought to be looked at, whether it's required or not. I think it's to our benefit to delineate these things in the charter. For one thing, the people as a whole vote on those changes to the charter. And it then makes it very clear where the responsibilities lie. But my personal standpoint, I don't have a problem with it. I think, is this an item that's on discussion for the retreat?
It certainly can be.
Well, you got it. I saw the list on the retreat. It's getting big. And I don't know exactly how to deal with it.
Verdicting the way it's laid out, those are just issues you can pick and choose among what issues you...
I think I'd like to spend some time on it. One of the items there, I don't have a problem with an in-house attorney. One thing that has served us well in terms of the arrangement we have is we have a strong history in terms of the relation that we have with the attorney that we frequently have here, except when that turns out sabbatical. Knowing a long-term history of the city, because Mr. Sullivan has served us for so long, he's also one of the leading, if not the leading, land use attorneys in the state. We benefit tremendously from that. We rarely lose cases when they go through Luba and so forth. We have, we've had them remanded to us. I'm not sure we lost them. But we've had them remanded to us, and oftentimes when we've stuck to our own original decision, but perhaps with other findings or whatever it is that's required, we've won almost all those cases. And I think, even if we go for an in-house, I think it would be of interest to us to have a budgeted item in terms of a consulting attorney to deal with some specific issues, land use being one of them, where we have this tremendous working relationship with the firm or firms, depending on where Mr. Sullivan works. We tend to, I think we tend to move from firm to firm depending where Mr. Sullivan's located. But in any case, that benefits tremendous. And I, even if we go for an in-house attorney, we have to have some mechanism, a retainer mechanism or something else available to us to make use of that tremendous history that we have. But I'm really willing to consider this, Commissioner Nocita.
I think we need probably a little bit more discussion on the pros and cons of all of that as we go forward. Mr. Patterson.
Let me just provide a few comments, and you can carry this over into your retreat. And again, I would encourage you, as you visit with your candidates, that you may want to share some of your thinking on this as well. Just as on the chart here, Clackamas County, Montnomah, and Washington County and Beaverton are all different forms of government, so that's not an apple to apple for those, but be that what it may. The one thing you do want to consider, if you do decide to make the city attorney hired by the commission, and I've worked in both situations, you don't want to politicize that position. And with a divided council, you can really swap attorneys a lot, especially if it's a contractual arrangement, because you may or may not agree with their opinions. And you can run into a case, too, where, because I've run into this before, working in a situation where the attorney was appointed by the council is, and it's rare, because usually this thing works because of the individuals, as Mr. Kabizman indicated, where the attorney says can't talk to the manager because he has to advise his client, which is the city commission first. And that's a rare occasion, and that's, I would say, you've got an issue, but that does come up. The other thing, too, in terms of what's in-house or outhouse, is one thing you do have now with Garvey, Schubert, and Bear, is you do have a whole firm working with you. And on a daily basis, we seem to have a lot of attorneys engage in a lot of variety of different things. Cynthia Frazier has been, well, just resolved one of our cases for us. Of course, last night, Kerry Richter was here. Tonight, we have Bill with us, and of course, Mr. Sullivan occasionally calls in from some foreign land. The final thing I want to mention of is the issue in regards to information to the commission as characterized by Mr. Nocita. I have explained that on other occasions, and philosophically, we just see this different. The issue he's referring to had to do with one of the development projects, of which Mr. Janik was the lead attorney on. Mr. Sullivan got some information, put together a memo, which he raised several questions. Definitely when I looked at that, I knew that Mr. Janik had not seen that, because we had covered each of those things. What I did was get back so that Ed and Steve had that discussion, and once that was put together, that was forwarded to the commission, because you needed to hear from who had been working on it and make sure that your attorneys were speaking to one voice to you, not some issues being raised that really, without the full understanding of that issue. We've gone through this a couple of times. It continues to get characterized that was withheld from the council. It was a matter of getting information. Because one thing you want your staff speaking to you in is one voice. If we all came in here voicing a bunch of different opinions, it's going to be an interesting debate for this commission, as well as you're going to be very confused, and I think you're going to have a public that's going to be pretty upset, so.
Commissioner West.
Thank you. Well, this issue has, I have a few different points to make with this issue and concerns. And one is, first off, is, you know, if we need a charter amendment. And the second thing is the timing. And I think it's not fair to have this all made up before new city attorneys here. We can talk about it at the retreat. I'm happy.
City manager.
Yes, city manager's hired. We can talk about it this weekend. I'm happy to talk about it this weekend. But, you know, the timing of it concerns me, is to do it before that they come. And then we've talked, Commissioner Nocita laid out a graph on other metro areas of who, or other cities in the metro area who have, council has the authority to hire the attorney. But one of the things that this graph does not tell me is any efficiency, you know, what's going to serve our citizens best. And then the other factor is what's going to, you know, what's the cost analysis on this? So in-house, or whether the council hires it or the city manager. So I think that's, a broader discussion is needed. Thank you.
Those are good questions. Commissioner Nocita.
Okay. Couple of points I want to make. First, just to Mr. Patterson's point, I have memory failures once in a while, and I'm not shy about admitting them. So with the proviso that my recollection may be fallible on this, and I will check for everybody, that's not what I'm referring to. The incident I'm referring to had to deal with the access permit on Agnes Avenue. And we had a meeting with ODOT where they came to a hearing, and I had made some inquiries regarding that issue. And the one with Mr. Janik did get to us. This one never got to us. And I mentioned that in the memo that Mr. Minor reported about. So again, with the proviso that sometimes my memory is fallible, I'm pretty sure that that was the one I was referring to in the memo that never reached us. So with that, I just wanted to ask...
Topic at hand.
Yes. Where would the commission want to go with us? Do you want to be in the process of having Mr. Kabizman take a look at whether this indeed would require a charter amendment at this point? Or do you want to wait a while on that so we've had more discussions?
I think the charter amendment, for me, is absolutely key. It's a barrier that we will want to discuss in greater depth. So I don't, it stops the discussion, for me. And so I think if we can...
Multiple issues, too, when you open the charter.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. It's multiple issues. We also have a bunch of other needs that, so if we did a charter change, we have quite a long list of changes that are needed as well. So anyway, that, I'm, for me, that's the number one piece of research we need.
If I can close with actually agreeing with Mr. Patterson, can I just...
Wait, 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 can we get this away?
Speaking to the mic.
This is on recording. I do concur with Mr. Patterson regarding the issue of Garvey, Schubert, Bear, and the advantage of having a firm with several practice groups, because I could also name the Blue Heron bankruptcy as well, where, I mean, that kind of, I mean, instantly come in handy when something pops up like a jack-in-the-box and, you know, we had the ability to inquire about that on short notice.
I think that is a start.
Commissioner Neely.
Yes, I think we need a charter amendment. I do not want to tie that to the clean look of our charter.
We have to.
Yeah.
No, no, that wasn't really doing that.
Yeah. You said we have a lot of things, and I don't think, and I don't think, I don't think this needs to be tied to that. We went through several months under a previous commission, doing some charter revisions, and it fell by the side, because there were so many other things we were doing. But we actually had many meetings on that, and extensive notes were taken by Attorney Sullivan at that time, and we do have to clean up that charter, it's just that it's a time issue. It's a time issue. So I don't want to hold that up. You know, I don't have any problem with draft charter amendments coming forward, but I do agree with Mr. Patterson that this needs to be a dialogue that occurs through our interview process with the city manager. It goes to elections, so it's not going to go to an election before we have a new city manager. So I don't have that concern. It needs to be, it needs to be something that we discuss both in the interview process and with whomever we, whomever we select as mayor, as on city manager.
Somebody.
Somebody. Nice.
Mr. Kabizman.
Two points, and I'll be relatively quick. I note that the original email response was relatively, you know, not as certain, and I've had more discussions since then, and, you know, I'm feeling more confident than I was in that email, that this probably does require a charter change. You know, and we can put it into a formal opinion and get it out to you and go from there. But, you know, I think it's likely that this is, this would require a charter change. The other point goes to the in-house versus the firm and the ability to call...
In-house versus outhouse.
I'm trying to avoid that one, you know. In any event, Commissioner Neely had struck on the idea of, you know, making sure that if in fact... sure that if in fact you, the city was going to an in-house position, you know, that's not uncommon to have a, have different people who, who, you know, you call for the land use, you call for bankruptcy, you call for certain situations. So it certainly is a benefit to have the, the firm that's, that's right there. But there, it doesn't preclude other arrangements.
As a full, full employment opportunities for attorneys.
Many of those, I think. Commissioner Nocita.
I had another thought in reaction to something Commissioner Neely said. Just to clarify, Commissioner Neely, you indicated that you thought that the budget for the city attorney was in the city manager's budget?
Well, I don't know where it is, but the point is if we hire the, if we hire the person, it should be under our, in our, our budget.
Okay.
Now, that, that was my comment.
There's, there's a separate budgetary fund.
Yeah. And I was, I didn't, I didn't mean to say that, I guess. I did say it, but my point was-
Let's clarify it.
To be, if we're going, if any, anybody that works for us other than the city manager, we need to have the responsibility of saying, well, we're doing things we shouldn't be doing here because we're going to blow our city commission budget. Those line items then should be under our budget. So we, we're responsible for the over, overuse of funds there. And that, that was my intended point.
Just duly blown.
Yeah, we need to transfer an infusion.
Okay, thank you. We'll revisit this at the, when we get the-
We've always had a carryover. We've not blown the budget.
Yeah, yes. Actually, we have. We need to pat ourselves on the back for that. Not always been easy. Okay, city manager's report.
Mr. Leffler, do you have anything to report? I know you handed out a big packet of information there.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner is before you in that large vanilla envelope, I guess, are 53 blind applications for, that's as of effectively 5:00 this evening. I received the last one via email just, just before 5:00, so it's stamped at 5:00 this evening. I will be sending you electronically the grading criteria. I guess I'll send it to you. And if you have comments as far as, as if you, if there's something that you disagree with, please let me know immediately. You know, I'm, I'm not opposed to, to changing as the commission sees fit to meet the needs of the screening process. But what I plan on doing is using the, the ideal candidate profile that, that was developed and approved by the commission prior to opening the job, job announcement, job recruitment, and then using those competencies, base, base type skills as what you're going to be grading, what you're going to be evaluating.
Any supplies or?
It's 1 through 53. You may be able to obviously know who they are, if you're familiar with some of the jurisdictions that they're currently employed in. But there's some, there's a fair number also out of state that you probably won't know who they are.
Just, I have a question, because I've been kind of thinking about this blind analysis. Just wanted to ask my colleagues up here whether, whether that's really the way we want to go with the blind initial analysis. The reason it comes up for me is that I think that my evaluation could be aided by, for example, going on the internet and Googling the person and see, you know, what, what they might be, what, you know, we might learn about them that they chose not to, you know, put in their application. And, well, but if this, would you say 53 candidates now, and we're winnowing down to 10?
To whatever.
It's your call. And we're, it's going to be whomever you want to do final interviews on.
Okay. So then the question becomes is how many we want to have the next round and how, and, and take, take a cutoff.
I need to, I need to throw up the HR jail flag here and just be, you know, honestly, in the screening process, you're, you're supposed to be looking at the skills and the, the abilities of the candidates and not so much, you know, and, and there are some concerns, I believe legal concerns with, you know, looking at their Facebook pages if you knew and/or, you know, Googling them, maybe because that's kind of public record. But that, those are, those are some significant concerns that, that as a recruiter and as a, as an HR professional, I would, I would caution you not to, to take a look at absolutely necessary. Maybe on the final candidates, if you, if you want to, to discuss those. But for the, for the actual screening process, I understand it's a, it's a large number and welcome to my world. But that's, that's kind of what we're, we, you know, we have to do. And that's part of the reason why I recommended initially to do a screening committee rather than have to go through, have all 53 of them. But that's the commission's choice.
Closes at the end of this month?
It's, the first screening, the initial closing was today, the 12th. And so, but we're still accepting applications now. You know, based on the 53, we don't have to go beyond the 53. If you, if you find you're, whom you're looking for in that, within that 53, I will hold on to whoever comes in after now and say, you know, thank you. We've done our initial screening, but we're not going to consider. If after, if you go through the 53 and you say, no, none of these really meet the bill, then I'll take from everybody from tomorrow on and make copies of those and give those to you for, for screening.
I definitely would not want to lose the opportunity of someone really spectacular coming in between now and the end of the month, so.
And that possibility exists. However, based on the number of applications that have been received since, from Friday, I think this is, it's typical where they knew the initial closing date was today. And I received more than, more than a third of the applications within the last few, few days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday.
Do you have information on the date each application came in?
I do.
No, do we in our packet?
Yes, they're, well, kind of, sort of. They're, you know, because the ones that came in on the weekend, they're all date stamped.
Yeah.
Every one of them is date stamped. But if they came in on the weekend, they got date stamped on Monday.
I've said on many interview panels and selection panels from the state level on down, and often when you do scoring, you'll see a natural break. So I think that when we look at the scoring, it'll be a natural break. So I don't think we need to worry about, about that when we see that. Commissioner Neely.
His recommendations were things that I was going to put forward that we could actually go into more detail outside of what's being presented once we've screened those candidates. I think what we're going to find is that a lot of them are just going to fall off. And I think a lot of these, a lot of these people might be coming forward just to get a resume put together. That is, they may not think that they're going to be able to do it at this time, that they don't necessarily have the background, but they like to assemble things. I've done that before, where I've applied for something that I wasn't all that interested in fact, but it gave me an opportunity to pull various things together. I do think-
Did you apply for this?
Very conflict of interest.
Well, it was, yeah.
The other thing I was going to say was that meeting the deadline for submitting ought to be one of the qualifications. If they come in late, you know, unless somebody's remarkable. But why did they miss, why did they miss our deadline? I, I think, I think that ought to be one of the criteria for selection. Even if the person's very good, what happened?
And I think that if Jim doesn't know that story, you know, I think that he would tell us if we had a compelling story that seemed to bridge that.
Yeah. If you saw something that just stood out and you wanted to bring it forward to us, I think we're going to do that. I think a deadline should be a deadline.
Yeah. Mr. Kobayzmann.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to touch back on a topic we talked about last Wednesday, and that's the executive session discussion of deliberations and whether you can, can in fact do that. And did more research and, you know, essentially, you can use an executive session, but only if you put together the standards, criteria, and policy directives that you're going to use in hiring the city manager. So you can't rely on, on sort of the general policies. Now, the grading criteria that you have may be a good start on what, and maybe all you really need. You know, I haven't seen it, and I don't know if Leffler put it together with that in mind. But to the extent you want to have an executive session on, on, to discuss the relative merits of, of people and, and those things, you need to adopt standards, criteria, and policy directives that you're going to use in, in making the, the decision. And then have them available, have a public hearing on those standards and criteria.
We have not done that part. You two would, is there any, work together on that?
Yep.
Okay. Great. Any other things that need to come before us this evening? We are adjourned.